Here.
Mr. McLeod.
Present.
Yes.
Ms. Devine, Ms. Davis, Mayor Benjamin.
Mayor Benjamin, Ms. Devine is joining us remotely today. And Mr. Davis is in route.
All right. Now she, is she live?
Ms. Devine, can you hear us?
I'm muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. You there, Ms. Devine? Ms. Devine?
Yes ma'am.
Oh.
Yes ma'am, I'm here.
Okay, very good.
Let's say aye, just to recognize your presence.
Oh, here.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Theresa.
We will carry forward our fiscal year 2018 through 2019 budget discussions. I appreciate the time you all have given me and staff. You know, I've called this year of budget discussions a budget of realities. And I'm saying that to many of our employees and former employees who are in the room because that's where we are. We are looking very closely and have labored and struggled and talked about some hard decisions. And it's time for us to explain those decisions, hopefully in a way that our employees, our retirees, and the citizens of Columbia can understand because what the city faces is no different than many other public and private entities across the country. Mayor Benjamin knows in his travels as the U.S. President of the Conference of Mayors, sharing some information with me this weekend on the hard decisions that all entities are facing when it comes to healthcare insurance and coverage for people that have given their service to us for a long time and we don't take that lightly at all. So what we want to start with Mayor Benjamin, and I want to be real clear about this, is this is a budget workshop. There are no votes made today. This is a time for council to see the recommendations that I've put in the city manager's budget because it is the city manager's budget. The decisions, the recommendations that I'm putting before council are those that I've had to come up with this staff. And so this is a presentation period. We've had conversations with council, but this is really their first final look at a final budget that's come together. The public hearing for the budget where people can give additional input is on June 5th, next Tuesday evening at 6:00. And that's when there would be a first reading on the budget which encompasses these decisions that we have to make regarding retiree healthcare insurance coverage and for our actives as well. So with that, we will get started with the presentation period. The first presentation explains, and we want to make sure we're real clear. And as we go through it, if the mayor and council have questions, we'll take those questions during the presentation of the employee and retiree healthcare program. Ms. Pamela Benjamin, Human Resources Director and Chief of Staff.
Let's remind everyone, we have the city manager's conference room is open. Where folks who may not have seats, some seating there, as well as the chambers are open as well. Those folks show up if they need someplace to sit down, go in both spaces. Still get it live. Ms. Benjamin, who is of no relation to me, I might add.
You say that again.
Of no relation.
I get asked that question every day.
My very best frost gum voice I can do. We have no relation.
I do, I get that question asked of me every day. Good afternoon. As Ms. Wilson just stated, I am here to give a presentation on some of the things that we've discussed through several meetings that we've had with council. We have been, of course, having this discussion for quite some time now, and we've had some recent presentations, one in February, one in April. And this is a summation of some of that information. We've also had some smaller meetings with council as well to really get a sense of what decisions we can make that are going to be viable to maintain some type of benefit and to make sure that we have coverage for our employees as well as retirees and which decisions that we're going to make. So as you all know, healthcare costs continue to rise every year. As you can see the projections, they've increased every single year. I've just given you some information from fiscal year 2013, 2013 and 2014 up until 2016, 2017, and we're projected at around $25 million for healthcare costs for this particular fiscal year. So that's kind of the trend. You see that trend is increasing every single year. And so every year, we do have these discussions about what decisions need to be made in order to maintain healthcare for our active employees as well as our retirees. So we're here again to have that discussion as well. So in some of our prior presentations, you all have been given some information about what kind of decisions that you need to make. We'll get to it a little bit later in the presentation, but one of the major decisions that need to be made is are we going to maintain our DDB? And the DDB is the defined dollar benefit. That was established back in 2014? Yes, in 2014. And what we did was we, council voted to set aside a particular amount of money for each retiree and their dependent in order to try and cap the liability that we had for our OPEB liability. And for those of you who don't know what OPEB is, it's our retiree benefits, includes pension and employee healthcare or retiree healthcare. So we've looked at different scenarios.
Medical and dental.
Medical and dental.
Not dental.
Not dental. It's medical. It's not dental.
It's just medical.
It's just medical. So we've looked at from one extreme to the other. What do we do if we don't maintain our DDB? And how does that affect the liability to maintaining it? And in what mechanism we provide that defined dollar benefit to our retirees? And so as we've gone through these discussions over the last couple of months, we've come up with some recommendations that will go on further, you'll see in the slides. So to start some of the changes or some of the proposed recommendations, we're talking about active employee insurance. So currently, we have presented to you as part of Ms. Wilson's budget, some ideas about changing employee or active employee health benefits in order to continue to maintain the benefit at a rate that is sustainable for the city of Columbia. So what we are proposing is a phased-in increase to premiums. And we have historically not had that typical 80/20 share that we started out back when Daniel was first on council and they kind of recommended some balance to the city contribute 80% and the active employee contribute 20%. We're currently around 88% and 12%. So the recommendation is to move that percentage closer to the 80/20 share. It's looking at about $20 average per month increase in premiums for active employees. We're also looking at increasing some of the deductibles, the out-of-pockets, maximums, and the co-pays, making some changes to that. And also looking at the pharmaceutical tier structure and changing some of the costs for insurance, for pharmacy cost. As you all know, we did institute a tobacco surcharge, so we're looking at increasing that from $50 to $100. And also at the concept of a spousal surcharge for spouses who have credible coverage available to them. So in this example, or in this situation, if an employee has their spouse covered, their spouse works for an entity that provides health insurance coverage, then in order for that person to remain on the coverage, they'd have to pay an additional surcharge in order to be retained on that employee's coverage.
And if the spouse doesn't?
If the spouse doesn't, then we would still maintain that benefit for that spouse. And they could pay at the current, whatever the rates are for spousal coverage. Do you might have any other questions about that? So those were the things that we were looking at or recommending for the active employees.
Is that, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Is that still roughly 2,000 active employees?
Yes. So we're looking at, we've got 2,063 employees that are covered. Some of our employees aren't covered because they may be on TRICARE or they may have coverage through their spouses, so they're not covered. But that's what we're looking at. We're looking at about 2,600 employees that are active with us. About 2,063 are covered under our plan.
So there's roughly 500 people that have alternative healthcare, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. They, like I said, some of them are retired militaries, so they have TRICARE, some of them have coverage from another entity. Some of them are retirees from another place and they're working with us, so they're different scenarios for those people.
So the deductible and out-of-pocket expenses change. Talk a little bit about that.
So depending on what plan you're on, because the city has three different plans. We have a core plan, a buyout plan, and a base plan. So depending on what plan you're on, your deductible varies. For example, I'm trying to find a little presentation, the last presentation we had. So just to give you an example, if you currently have, you're on the base plan, your deductible is currently $2,000. So with the increases that we're talking about, we would raise that deductible from $2,000 to $2,500. And so that's one of the examples. Out-of-pocket maximum would go from $7,000 to $7,150. So there's some slight changes. Depending on what plan you're on makes a difference of what your deductibles, your co-pays, and your coinsurances are. Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Ms. McDowell?
Sure.
Okay.
I was going to say, if there was any other context you can give, the importance of the spousal surcharge at a time when we're having to make such hard decisions. If you have a spouse who has the opportunity to get coverage, and our coverage has always been as robust as it is, a great plan, we get that. But at a time like this, when we're having to make such hard decisions that affect retirees and actives and a lot, everybody, to be more equitable, this is a change that could help and create some savings. Because you're kind of putting the onus on people to make decisions, you know, that affect the whole, the whole group of people that we're trying to still maintain coverage for. By, they have the opportunity, they're working, they have the opportunity to get coverage with their own employer versus the expense that is adding to the expense that the city is covering that, those additional dependents when they have another opportunity for coverage.
Right. I mean, you know, ultimately, we're trying to provide insurance coverage to our active working employees and our retirees. And so it's not, it's pretty typical for employers to charge a surcharge, to allow people to stay on the coverage whenever the employee's spouse has coverage that they can get other places. So financially, it is our best interest to make sure we're doing what's in the best interest of our active employees. And so that's one of the things that would allow us to do that and spend those resources on those employees who work for us and those spouses who don't have coverage in other places. We see it a lot where our plan is such a great plan that a lot of people forego the coverage that they have in their current employer to be on our plan. Because our plan is richer, we pay better, our deductibles are lower, our premiums are lower than a lot of your other employers. So we see that quite a bit where people are on our plan. But they work every day and they have coverage, or they have the access to coverage in their current employer. So that is very common.
Correct.
But it does factor into how we make these tough decisions about who gets covered and who doesn't get covered and how those resources are utilized.
Ms. Devine would like to know how much is paid on?
We've looked at $100 per month as a surcharge. That's in some of the data that some of our consultants have used as a proposed surcharge.
And most of the larger cities in South Carolina don't allow spouse, don't pay for any spouse coverage at all. They allow them to come on, paid for by the employee. But most of the cities in South Carolina pay for the employees, and if they want to cover their families or the spouse, they pay for it separately. Well, I think we're unique in South Carolina by offering any kind of defined dollar benefit beyond the employee themselves.
Certainly. There's certainly a range. You know, you've got all kinds of employers, but some of your major employers, they either don't allow spouses on the coverage or they don't supplement that spouse's insurance like we do. So it's pretty common. A lot of your, you know, your public entities, they don't allow spouses on the coverage at all.
Ms. Devine, when she has questions, because of the sound quality, she's watching from the stream, and we may have to pause and let her answer her question via text, and we'll relay it. If you have a question for her, we just need to give her time.
We certainly will, you know, give more specific information about each plan and the amounts of the changes. We wanted to let you know that this is a follow-up to our previous conversation and that based on the information we've shared with you all previously, that this is the direction we're going towards to recommend for active employee health benefit changes. Any other questions on that? So as far as retiree health insurance is concerned, we again, like Ms. Wilson has said, have constantly looked at this. I've been here seven years. This has been a point of discussion ever since I've been here, and I'm sure it will continue to be because this is a challenge for all employers. And we certainly take it very seriously and have considered a lot of the different options out there. But just to give you a little scenario, like I said, in 2012, I think I said 2014, but actually in 2012, the DDB was established for retirees for the other post-employment benefits, the liability. And it was about $110 million during fiscal year 2012, 2013. So the DDB placed a cap on the city's contribution for pre-65 retirees and is currently at $1,130 per month and $840 per month for dependents. So it's $1,130 per month for the retiree themselves and $840 per month for the dependents.
And can you just?
It is $1,130 per month for the retiree and $840 per month for the dependent.
What is the current enrollment in the pre-65 retirement?
I knew you were going to ask me that. I don't have my reading glasses.
I had two or three different numbers, that's why I was curious.
We're looking at 386 participants. Now, when I say that number, of course, it may vary a little bit based on how many dependents a person has. So we have, for example, we have 24 people that have full family coverage. So they may have three people on their plan, they may have four people, they may have five people, they may have 10 people. So I'm looking at the number of plans that we have for those retirees. And all the city covers about 5,000 lives between active and retirees.
So I had roughly the number that was given to me by someone, one of these meetings, roughly 402 pre-65 coverages. Does that sound about right?
Yes, that depends too on when you get, got that number.
Yeah, because it fluctuates, because people roll off and go to post-65, people come on, people.
If we just use 400 as an average, that might be a safe number.
Okay. The DDB for post-65 retirees.
Pre-65.
Pre-65. So there's a difference between pre-65 and post-65, right? So the DDB for the post-65, and those are Medicare-eligible retirees, is $300 for the retiree and $225 for the dependent. So it's $300 for the retiree and $225 for the dependent. So that is the amount of money that the city contributes to, sets aside for.
GAAP coverage, essentially.
Right. So what we do for the post-65 is we do, we have a supplemental plan that is offered through United Healthcare. And the post-65 retirees also have to pay a premium for medical and pharmacy, even though we're contributing the DDB currently, because that's the total cost of the plan. Based on the fact that it's a small population and their experience is pretty high, then that makes us have to pay around $400 for pharmacy and another, almost $400 for medical. So it's pretty expensive for us to offer that supplemental plan. But again, it's a supplemental plan, Medicare is primary, United Healthcare is a supplemental plan for the post-65.
So your real cost of supplemental is 700 or 400? 300?
On top of the cities, what the city's already paying.
Right. So you're really talking about 700 per person?
Right.
And the market out there is much less if it's done individually, correct?
It absolutely is.
According to some of the retirees who've not taken it and gone and done their own, they're paying significantly less per month for supplemental.
That is correct.
Because we're having to create a program specifically for that, that's why the costs are so high.
Exactly. And we do, from time to time, we hear from our post-65 retirees who say, "I could get a cheaper plan out there on my own if I just go out to, you know, AARP or United Healthcare, I can get my, a cheaper plan." And we say, "You're absolutely right." Because you may, depending on your personal situation, be able to get a plan that's much cheaper. So that is something that we hear quite often. In FY '18, the city is contributing more than the DDB amount as a result of not increasing retiree premiums and not making any plan changes. So because we haven't increased retiree premiums and we haven't really maintained that DDB, we're here facing some really significant decisions. If the city fails to maintain the DDB going forward, its OPEB liability could go up two to four times higher by fiscal year 2047, and we're looking at a billion-dollar liability. So that's why we've looked at some hard decisions.
Do you mind, you are, someone's bringing it back home, why 2047 is important and how that affects our budgeting today, year after year? And maybe what that billion-dollar liability means in terms of our annual contributions and the like?
I mean, in simple terms, we won't be able to cover our active employees, let alone retirees going into the future if we continue at the pace that we are. I mean, that's just an unheard-of liability to bear. You can't do it.
And 2047 is the 30-year window, is that a magic number?
Yeah, it's the 30-year window. Of course, we, it's 30 years out, and we have had actuarial studies done, looking at our current population and all the factors that they look at during an actuarial study as far as age, gender, length of morbidity. There are all these factors that go into how they come up with the actuarial study. But 2047 is 30 years out. So we're looking at how that.
And we're required to compute and show those, that long-term liability over 30-year horizon. And then we have to set aside funds each year to meet that long-term liability. Do we have a number that shows us what that looks like to meet a, I know we've got pay going and everything else, but we're talking about a lot of money.
On an annual basis, how much do we, what we do?
We're talking about inability, not just to, not just to cover healthcare expenses, but inability to cover basic services for the city if we don't get our arms around this. I mean, I think that's, we've got to make sure people understand we're not.
The gravity of it.
We're not, we're not just talking about insurance for retirees or even active employees. We're talking about inability to meet basic services if we don't get arms around the expense long-term.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's.
So as we've talked through the months, the decision has been made of whether we're going to maintain that DDB or not. Because that's one huge decision. And then if we do, what mechanism is that going to look like? And then it's also been a decision, or it needs to be a decision made of who will be eligible for the retiree health insurance benefits going forward after this fiscal year on forward. So when we looked at some possible decisions about what to do, we looked at creating a health reimbursement account based on the current DDB and the amount for the pre-65 retirees. The HRA would be based on that 1,130 or that 840 for those employees who are current pre-65 retirees and employees hired prior to July 1st, 2009, that meet eligibility requirements for retirement. So we looked at, how do we cap that population? How do we give some of our longer-term employees the benefit of having health insurance when they retire? How do we make sure that we're providing something to those long-term employees and our current retirees? So those were two of the decision points that we're recommending based on Ms. Wilson's budget. We're also looking at the possibility of eliminating post-65 coverage for retirees. And that would be eliminating the DDB for that population, and they would no longer be receiving that $300 or $225 of DDB, depending on whether they're a retiree or a dependent. We've also looked at adding an age requirement to be 55 years of age in addition to the requirement for the 20 years of service with the city of Columbia. And that 20 years of service is based on those employees that were here prior to July 1st of 2009. So that's the eligibility requirement for employees that are, that were here prior to July 1st, 2009. After July 1st, 2009, it changed to 25 years for police officers' retirement and 28 years for regular retirees. So that's where that line was drawn. It wasn't an arbitrary line, but that's where that line was drawn. What we find is our average age for our retirees, our pre-65 retirees, is about 57 years old. So a lot of our pre-65 retirees go on and have other employment and have, some of them, a lot of them have the opportunity to get coverage with their current employer. So we were looking at, how do we balance between offering coverage to people who don't have the opportunity to have coverage and those employees or those retirees who may have the opportunity to have coverage at other places?
Have, did you look at?
Ms. Wilson, I'm sorry, we're getting questions or comments online. If you often actually are speaking into your microphones or not covering your microphones, we are able to hear you as well. Thank you.
So.
It was actually online, those were Tamika.
I'm sorry, it was online.
So as we look at, you know, number two, which in HR account is something we've talked about, since we do have money put away and it's a way to feed that and you keep the regular. Have you looked at, you have eliminated post-65 coverage for retirees. What is, based on the population we have today, then can we not put an HRA account together for that to carry those folks who are in the system? I mean, they have a better opportunity to get a better quality healthcare. And to be quite honest, it's savings on this side of the fence too, because we're overpaying to cover them today. And they're not getting a better coverage. To create an HRA account for them as well?
Certainly.
And still be able to maintain our balance? Because that's, that's what we're looking at at this point. To me, that makes more sense.
Right.
Because right now, we're. Because right now, we're, we're, the numbers, you know, staggering.
Yeah, we are, these are recommendations, we certainly can tweak and make adjustments to those. Um, we have looked at options, because you all know, we had those options, one through three, that were presented. Um, I think, wh- when was that, was that in April? And one of those options allowed for continuing the DDB for that post-sixty-five group. So that is one of the options that we've presented to you all in the past. We certainly can make that adjustment to this list of recommendations.
But we could set it up the same way, where.
We could absolutely set it up the same way.
Based on line item two, if you went in, I think, I, I figured out today, that's almost about thirteen and a half thousand dollars per employee, pre-sixty-five employee.
Right, so, a- and like you said, the, the HRA.
It's an additional ten, if you add a spouse, it's other. You know, which is a lot of money as well, so you're really talking about, if there's an employee and a spouse together that don't have options, we're contributing twenty-three thousand dollars into an HRA account.
That's correct. So let, let, go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Benjamin, what's the savings to the city if we eliminate spousal coverage for the active as well as the retirees? Do you know that figure?
I don't know that figure off the top of my head, I, I, I really.
Mr. Rickman's already said it's ten thousand dollars.
That's just for post.
That's for post, right. So that, there's a, there's a totally different contribution rate for active employees than it is.
Well, if you eliminate it for active that have credible coverage elsewhere, would that not be a substantial savings in itself?
We certainly, it would eliminate a group of, a population of, of covered participants.
For those that have credible coverage elsewhere.
But you mean, and don't do the surcharge?
Don't do the surcharge, just eliminate.
Just eliminate the coverage.
Eliminate the coverage if you have credible coverage elsewhere.
And I'm sure Ms., Ms. Devon is probably going to chime in here as well. Um, what's, what's the threshold for credible coverage elsewhere? How do we, how do we determine that?
It, it, there's a, um, an ACA and an IRS, um, threshold for, for determining what credible coverage is. It, it base, it's based on how much it costs. Um, and how much of your income that coverage will cost you to have that. Um, it doesn't matter if it's good or bad, it's, it's a, it's an income ratio, and I'd, I'd have to give that.
You would. Objectively, subjective, okay.
Credible coverage is.
Surcharge doesn't.
There is a, there is a definition for it.
You'll be back here in twelve months having to change it again. It just doesn't work.
I'll, I will look it up for you, I don't, I don't have that information.
You'll have a model for us on that, we can look at.
Certainly, um, you know, one of the things that, um, we can look at it. We can look at the definition of what credible coverage is. It is, it is certainly a recruiting tool and a retention tool for us to be able to offer health insurance for our active employees' spouses. Um, that's a, that's a really significant thing for us, and so we really hadn't considered eliminating that, but we certainly will look at the numbers.
But if they had credible coverage elsewhere, that wouldn't be such a big recruiting tool. It would be a recruiting tool if they didn't have that.
Coming, coming in the door. You mean, coming in, coming into the system.
Yeah, we, we'll certainly look at it, I mean, there are, um, employers who do that, who don't offer coverage to employee spouses who have credible coverage, and they're active. So that is something that, that we certainly can look at.
I think we need to look at that seriously, I think that would be a.
Last question, when you get a chance. Yes ma'am, Ms. Devon, go ahead. Um, okay, two things, um, this is part of my delay. So go back to the retirees and their coverage. Um, so if a retiree has the option of coverage somewhere else, um, how do we know that? And, and the reason I'm asking is I know in the past, we've had retirees that have had other jobs, that have option to be covered somewhere else, but because our coverage is so good, they've declined the coverage other, somewhere else.
It would be an affidavit, I mean, I know that we could, you know, there's only so much we can do to, to dig into that factually, but, I mean, certainly we would expect people to be, um, honest, and, and there's a process that the Human Resources Department would go through, you know, to seek that information, but once we've asked and we get an answer and it's on an affidavit, I mean, that's what we would have to go by essentially. I think there's some other steps, but to, you know, that's about as far as probably we would go to determine that.
And for the spouses, we would have, um, everybody who has a spouse submit us a letter from the, from the HR department of their spouse's employer, saying that they don't have credible coverage. So we get the affidavit and, and we get the letter.
And, and that, that question, that first question was really, it was about the retirees, employees, so not about.
Yeah, they, they would have to just, we would have to.
I'm just thinking, um, along those lines, because I know that's an, um, expensive part of our coverage. And then my, my second question and, and comment along the lines of, of the spouse, and, you know, I think the surcharge is fair, um, you know, and maybe part of that is looking at, um, you know, what that surcharge is, so that, you know, it is, it is fair and compensates us a little bit. But, you know, I would reiterate what I've said before, I think that we, we do have, um, that concern as far as recruitment and retention of our current employees. We talked about this in the past, where someone can leave the city and make, um, much more in the private sector, especially when you're talking about engineering or, um, you know, folks with the, the skills that, that we need. And, and part of the, the allure of the city is, I think, that we have a, a good healthcare coverage, and if you consider adjusting it to the point where that, um, that amount doesn't encourage them to stay anymore, I think that we're running into a risk. So I think we need to look at all options as far as, as families, but when you're looking at people with younger families, and I know we can't exclude, uh, children, but when you think about spouses, we have folks who have spouses who may not work, or we have spouses that don't have, uh, coverage other places, and I think that a surcharge is probably the best, is a fair option for us to look at as far as keeping those folks and as a recruitment and a retention solution.
We'd have, we'd be required to, to get, to offer them insurance anyway, Tamika, if they didn't have other insurance. We couldn't, you couldn't just deny a spouse.
Right.
If they don't have credits, it, it will turn on the credible coverage piece.
Well, uh, no, I'm, I'm actually going to Mr. Duval's comment. I mean, I, I don't know what his comment or what, what his suggestion require us, even if they didn't have credible, because we keep talking, there's two different things here. We're talking about credible coverage somewhere else, and then we're talking about eliminating them all together, and I think those are two different conversations.
And I'm, I'm.
They are.
And my, my suggestion would be if they have credible coverage elsewhere, to eliminate them from both active employees and retired employees. And, and furthermore, I, what I would like to do is look at the savings that we could accumulate, especially if we eliminate spousal coverage with credible coverage in the active ranks. That's going to be several million dollars and put that back into employee benefits. It would, that would help all two thousand of our employees, rather than the small percentage that would fit the criteria of having a spouse or a family that needs coverage.
Um, a lot of employers, if they do that, they, those spouses that don't have access to coverage would either pay the full amount, um, they would pay our portion, city's portion and the premium portion. So that's, that's what a lot of employers do, if their spouses don't have credible coverage, they may charge them the total cost for that coverage. So there, there are ways to kind of work around it.
No.
And apparently I'm getting calls saying it was difficult for people to hear us online. Um, so all of us, let's see if we can lean up a little more into the, into the microphones as we, as we, as we speak. All right, thank you.
So let's talk, let's talk a little bit about what this HRA looks like, what, how it would, how it would, um, um, provide some benefit to our retirees. Um, what an HRA is essentially, a health reimbursement account, that would go into, that amount that we set aside right now for the DDB, the eleven thirty and the eight forty would go on and, into an HRA account. That HRA account would be used by the retiree, because in this situation, we're talking about the pre and potentially the post sixty-five. That would go into an account, and what they would do with that, those funds, is they could use it to pay their health insurance premiums, health plan deductibles, costs for doctor's office visits, prescriptions, x-rays, any other IRS-approved medical expenses. So what, in essence, it would be, instead of us having a retiree health insurance plan, we would give each individual retiree their DDB, and then they would be able to go out and shop for their own plan. So for some of our retirees, it would certainly be a cheaper situation than for others. So, for example, we've got one here. This is an example of a pre-Medicare retiree, an individual that's sixty years old in Richland County, because what we've already done is, one of our consultants, and we gave this to you in a prior presentation, they did an analysis of the plans that are offered out there. And as you can see, the plans are broken down into bronze, silver or gold, and depending on which plan the person chooses would depend on their deductibles, out-of-pocket maximums, and then what their monthly premiums would be. So for example, if you look down at the bottom where it says retiree pays, some retirees could pay nothing for their coverage. Our DDB could cover the entire cost of their coverage. Um, others may have to pay more depending on which level of coverage they choose. Um, and it also depends on where you are located geographically. But there are definitely plans available out there that the retiree would be able to take advantage of. And if we did that for the post-sixty-five, there are even more plans that are available for that population because of, um, there, there's just more, there's more activity in the market for post-sixty-five retirees. And I didn't, I don't think I included a slide for that, because I didn't think that was one of our options, but we certainly have researched and looked at what those plans look like, how they're tiered, and what that will look like for the retiree. So it's, it's really a replacement of the benefit, and again, they would have the opportunity to go out, search the market and find, uh, a plan that's available for them. We certainly would not be, be forcing them to do that by themselves. We would hire a navigator who would sit down with the retiree, each of them, because they each have different medical and different personal situations, and help them navigate and choose which plan is best for them. So it would be based on what their current health is, what kind of prescriptions they take, those types of things in order to make the decision of which plan is, is most, um, suitable for them. And then they would use that money on the HRA to pay for their premiums, and they would also use it for any other medical IRS-approved medical expenses that they may have. Do you have any questions about that?
Such as Pam, maybe talk about IRS-approved medical expenses, so, for example, who runs the government.
Well, it would be like, like co-pays, prescriptions, um, you know, any kind of fees that you're charged in your doctor's office. It would be, um, you know, insulin or, or any type of things like that. Things that, um, wouldn't be covered would be like plastic surgery, like Botox, like things that are elective, they may not be covered. Um, that varies, the IRS changes what's covered and what's not covered. Each year seems like it, because you used to could buy, um, over-the-counter medications. Now that's, you can't do that as much anymore or at all for, for most of them. So it would just depend on what the IRS regulations are. But it, it's going to be most of your high-dollar or your routine medical expenses that you'd be paying now with your coverage now. Your co-pays, your co-insurances, your out-of-pocket charges. You know, if you go to the doctor and they give you a bill because you got an x-ray, you could pay for that using your HRA funds. Um, so it's, it's going to be most of your standard medical, um, expenses.
And if it, if it doesn't run out on a year and during the course of one year, what, what happened to it?
It depends on how we set up our HRA accounts. Depends on if we set a maximum. Some of them, it just continues to roll over no matter what. Others have caps. It would depend on how we design our HRA account to, to, to what would happen with those funds. Some of them, if you don't use it by the end of the year, then the funds go away. Others allow you to carry over some of it or all of it. It would depend on how we structured it.
What, can, can you possibly just give me a little background? Because I'm, I'm struggling with just the, the number a little bit. You know, from an employee standpoint, we have a DBA and, and that could continue to grow. We're using this eleven hundred and thirty dollars for the.
A DDB?
Yeah, for the retiree, right. But the spousal number seems kind of high to me, that we're contributing seventy-five percent, but the employee is our responsibility. I mean, have we looked at changing those numbers where you, and it could, you could call it a shift or whatever, but seems to me our responsibility is to the employee first and foremost, and long-term than it is to, to an individual that didn't work at the city, spouse or whatever. I mean, I don't know everybody's situations differently. I'm just sitting here looking at the numbers and going, you know, there's, there's different ways to, to attack this, and, you know, is the obligation that we need to be putting forward to the individual that, that worked here? And, and, and that was their contribution. Because it's hard to rationalize that you're, you're, you're paying seventy-five percent of somebody's cost that, that didn't work it. Instead of paying a hundred percent of the cost of the person who did. Just throwing out food for thought as you're looking at these numbers.
Well, and the DDB that's set up now was established in twenty twelve, so we were just in an effort to maintain that current DDB. That's what the recommendations are based on. Um, you know, an actuarial study was done, and those were the recommendations made by the consultant at that time. Um, we can certainly look at adjusting that DDB to give more to the retiree and less to the spouse.
I mean, our obligation would be to the, to the employee or, or retiree. First and foremost.
We can certainly look at that, but we were just maintaining, well, and that's what all of, you know, all of our projected cost and all of our projected liability is based on that current DDB that was established back in twenty twelve. And so that's kind of, you know, what we've used as a guidepost for, for the data that you all have seen previously. But we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, it's still, to me, it still becomes a question of, your first and foremost responsibility should be to the employee who worked here.
He's saying that, he's saying that against a bad job of, as you're doing math here, and some employees, um, maybe not ever having it come out of pocket, others having it come out of pocket, actually helping meet those employees' needs first before you extend, uh, the obligation to, to spouses. So it, it's just a, just.
Well, it's from a contribution standpoint. It just, it, it doesn't make, it, the math just doesn't make sense.
Seems, uh, it seems.
Again, like Missy said, but it was based on the eighty-twenty and the premiums at the time, because we were, we were looking at all those figures back in twenty twelve, and we didn't, we haven't recalculated that DDB. Haven't increased it for inflation, anything like that.
Yeah, it might be worth it doing. Take a look at what that number would be today, reflective of today, based on the employee, pre, pre-sixty-five or. In post-sixty-five, it's, it's clear that the better deal and the better coverage is to do it individually.
Just a question, question on that. We have that formula now, as you said, because that was the standard of the mark, of the mark model in twelve. If we go back, when you research different models, looking at spouse not contributing at all, we would or could, um, maybe come up with a, with a model that maybe not contributing that much to, and a spouse that's not contributing, but not totally eliminating them.
I think, I mean, for us, I think we have a multitude of options. I think we want to figure out what the best option. I think we want to figure out what the best option that, realistically, that is sustainable. And where we are today is not sustainable, as you've seen the numbers.
Right.
It's just not possible. We can sit here and try to lie to everybody, everything can maintain the way it is, but it, it wouldn't. Five years, you won't have healthcare. So the reality is, we, we have to make some changes here, and we need to figure out what's best. But I think there's an obligation, first and foremost, to one group over another, and I think we need to look at it that way. Just food for thought.
No.
But until we put the numbers on the board, you can't, I mean, you just, you can't do that. But it's just, it seems interesting that the percentages are done that way.
Well, I think it probably goes to also just the more, the philosophical discussion of it all as well, and some of the points maybe Ms. Devine was raising. I mean, that is, that has been the model that the city has done for many, many years. When I came to the city, I always tell the story, I was shocked because I came from a different institution, a private industry, and I was getting my first paycheck, and, and noticed I didn't pay, have to pay for my healthcare insurance. I was shocked. I was like, where's the money taken out of my check? So over time, there's just, there's been a, a wonderful, um, system here at the city to, to do everything we could to take care of the employees and the spouse, children, or still, you know, by law, we'd have to take care of children and dependents. But spouses, I think it goes to, is it a recruitment tool? Is it something that has been a recruitment tool, and now we can't really maintain that anymore? I think the, what we presented was based off kind of where we've been and not. Um, going away from that philosophical.
Well, I think it could, overall, the systems change. You can go to Greenville, you go to Charleston, they all have different, you know, a lot of them are eliminated. Post-sixty-five, other people are, are paying in this, they don't take spouses. I mean, it's, it, it's, it's constantly changing.
Exactly.
I think recruitment's changed. And I don't think you have as many people who, who come and work for twenty, twenty-five years like you used to.
Correct.
I mean, things have changed, the opportunities, people are more mobile today, they don't stay in communities as long. I mean, there are all these factors that we could look at. But the reality is, is two thousand and eight, nine, our healthcare was fourteen, fifteen million dollars, and now we're at double.
Right.
You know, and that wasn't that long ago, so, you know, making those challenges, but still being able to provide for those folks who, who work here and, and served here. You know, I think that's our, we gotta try to come up with a good balance on that. And, you know, just, you just can't have everything, so we've gotta figure out what's, where's our priority.
The best recruiting, too, would be to get our starting pay and follow-on pay up by using the savings we're gonna have from healthcare, through, and that would go to everybody that works for the city of Columbia. Pay is the best recruiter.
You'd have to have some savings to pay it, to pay pay.
It's, uh, the protocol is no, but, but there are questions. I, I do want, I do want to make sure they're asked and answered, so. Are you done yet? Oh, the question is.
I am.
I did, I did have a question concerning, when we got to the two thousand and nine, and we were backing up the two thousand and nine. And it was on the second page that said, if, um, you know, that we're even covered for the age of fifty-five, or twenty years of service. Does that mean if you left after two thousand and nine, if you, for a prior two thousand and nine employee? Or does that mean, you know, if I've got a fifty-two-year-old person that's eligible for retirement today, can he not retire for three years?
Now, okay, so there are two different things going on here, right? So one of them is their, their eligibility to retire through the, through the South Carolina retirement system. So a person could potentially retire because they have the years of service with the South Carolina retirement system. Then there's the eligibility for our retiree health insurance. So there are two separate eligibility requirements.
But how much person can retire if he, if he has to go get his own insurance for three years? Or, you know what I'm saying? I mean, is, is there a cutoff, is there a grandfather period when that would have been? If that's one thing that got, like, hey, that's the one we want, that's the model we want, and you're fifty-one years old, retired right now, and you, or you don't have the insurance for four years, or your grandfather didn't?
So, so current retirees would be eligible for the benefit. It would be going forward for twenty nineteen forward. You'd have to be fifty-five years old.
That's new hires.
Only four.
Or if you're retirement-eligible with your years, and there's so many, Pam will have to help me with this, because I know I'll mess it up. There's, there's so many, um, ways now that you'd have to count your retirement eligibility. If the rule of ninety applies, starting in two thousand and fourteen, correct Pam, through the state retirement system. Um, if you were with the city prior to two thousand and nine, then if we, at that point in time, you only had to have twenty years with the city, um, and you wouldn't have had to get to the twenty-five or twenty-eight years. So it's all gonna depend on the individual. But assuming you, you could retire before January one of two thousand and nineteen, then you would be able to go ahead and retire and take advantage of, of this system.
And not be fifty-five.
And not be fifty-five.
And not be fifty-five.
I think what he's trying to ask is, if you were hired before two thousand and nine, does the fifty-five age requirement apply?
No.
No.
It only applies to active employees.
No.
It's not retro to current active.
It does not.
It's, it's a thing like, that was one of the only things that went unclear. If we agree with it or not, obviously, we've got different opinions over here, but that wasn't, wasn't clear on that.
So up to this point, we've had no age requirement.
Right.
If we retire after January, is the fifty-five requirement up?
Potentially, if this, if all, you know, if that's one of the recommendations that's accepted.
So I have what fifteen years to take it to that then?
Not if you were hired before.
Not if you were hired before two thousand and nine.
That's what I'm saying.
Not if you were hired before.
Your grandfather in the two thousand and nine?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we opening it up?
No, that's, that's. You would have to be retired now, or retire by January one of twenty, two thousand and nineteen, in order to not have to meet the fifty-five-year requirement. So you'd have to be an active retiree now, or a person who retires by twelve-thirty-one of two thousand and eighteen in order to be under fifty-five. After January first, two thousand and nineteen, you'd have to be fifty-five years of age in addition to meeting the other requirement.
Okay, so if I retire in seven years, I have one more requirement?
Yes.
So that's what fifteen years to take my insurance, my health policy?
Listen, no, you can retire. You can retire.
If you, even if you were here before two thousand and nine?
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't, someone asked something, couldn't see you're here.
Question.
Do you want to, they can be to ask questions?
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing right now. I mean, so, so it'd be, it'd be, it'd be easier. Now, listen, no, I, no, we want questions, not just speech. Okay, so, the main, 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 main reason asking questions is actually, ask a question, get an answer. Um, so we're, so that's, that's the only rule of asking questions, you actually have to ask a question. It's not post-speech, but this is an opportunity. Typically, uh, work sessions don't have Q and A, but I know a lot of questions. They're gonna help inform us as we, as we move forward. So if you got a question, yeah, please come and do it. And it, it, it's probably easier to do it from where you are, um, but I wonder if it's an interest of posterity, you need to do it on, at the microphone, I don't know. We don't have a walk-around mic, do we? Um, I don't think we do.
That's what that says. And we'd have to adjust it, but that's what.
Yeah, so, um, so let's, uh, let's go ahead and, if that, if that, is that okay with y'all?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you just have the questions?
Yeah, yeah, just go, just go ahead and, um, and, um, ask them. Uh, don't, not to, don't raise your hand, but we got, everybody's gonna chance to ask a question.
Steve.
Yes, sir?
Let's make sure she's kinda finished.
Okay, I'm sorry, are, are you done? I think she's in the questions section, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 she's ready for questions.
You want me to come up here, or how you wanna?
Yeah.
We're gonna try to get a walk-around mic, if not, for the time being.
Yeah, but, but, let's, we're gonna try to find a walk-around mic, y'all. But only because folks who weren't able to be here, also watching online, and want to be able there, probably have questions to ask that they can't ask from where they are. So, um, if you don't mind, come up front and, and ask any question, that'd be appreciated. Yeah, any, any, anybody? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, ask us, uh, state your name, your name for the record, and, and, and the question.
My name's, uh, Matthew Herschler. I work for the fire department.
Yes, sir.
Just some things to consider. I got hired when I was eighteen years old. As of January first, two thousand and nineteen, if that fifty-five-year-old age went into effect, you'd have multiple firemen having to do thirty-six years in the fire service to maintain that coverage. It's just some things to consider for guys who got in at an earlier age. And that's a long time in the fire service or police service.
And so, and, and so let me counter a little bit with that, which I understand what you're saying, and I think that's still a recommendation we're looking at. But I guess you would also have to understand that because of that age and the ability for you to continue to work and work another job, which you also do at a very young age, that also is a factor, with you being able to have coverage somewhere else, potentially, where you can get insurance and still be getting the insurance from the city. So there's, you gotta look at both sides of it.
But that, but that's, that's a verily given concern.
But it is.
Thank you for raising that, thank you.
And we, and we looked at that, because of course, we, we know the age and the demographics of our workforce. So definitely.
Um, I was curious as to why, have we explored the state healthcare plan?
Name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Investigate at Mostella, um, police department. Have we explored the state healthcare plan?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Because I, I was looking at it, that y'all currently pay eight thousand dollars for me a year, and it's about thirty-five hundred dollars less. I just was curious if y'all.
It's not apples and oranges compared.
And you've got to understand, too, that they have a whole lot more people.
You need to talk in the mic, Pam.
Sorry, sorry. Um, you know, insurance is a numbers game, and the state health plan has a whole lot more covered people than we do. They have, like.
Five hundred thousand.
Right, five hundred thousand people. So when you talk about getting the premiums in for five hundred thousand people, that, that's a big difference between the twenty-six hundred employees that we have.
The coverage is not comparable.
It isn't as good a coverage.
No, but it'll be better than what y'all offer.
No, ma'am. That is not.
I'd have to argue with you on that one.
Yeah.
Um, and I also have a concern about the fifty-five and older. When I, when I came here, you told me I had to work twenty years. You promised that to all people that were hired before two thousand. That we only had to work twenty years. I understand it not being free, but you're telling me I'm gonna have to work fifteen more years to take my, to pay my insurance. I'm not very pleased with that, and a lot of us are not. Because I have given my time in of twenty-five years, but I will still have to work eight more years just to take my insurance that I should be entitled to anyway, because I'm an employee of the city.
Yes, ma'am. We understand that concern.
Just, just so people who are, some people don't know, so currently, what, the cutoff date, so you have to be, you have to do twenty-five years.
In retirement.
To, to get retirement, correct?
It, it depends.
Depends on when you were hired.
Right, because if people who are currently here, who just got hired, they have to work the rule of ninety. So they have to work thirty years and be sixty years old, or whatever that age and, and retirement years equal. State law, that's the state law, right.
Something we should look into is, how do we just match it to the same way? Because that way, it gives you, it gives people the opportunity who have been in one segment in another.
Well, you did do that in twenty, in two thousand and nine, we matched, I mean, we do follow.
We matched it for what it was at that time, it's changed since then.
Changed again.
Right, because it was twenty-five and twenty-eight.
Right.
And when we made that change.
And what is it now?
It's the rule of ninety.
The rule of ninety.
Mm-hmm.
Rule of ninety's more, more stringent than the eight. Not for public safety.
Twenty-five.
You're still subject to the rule of ninety. Everybody's subject to the rule of ninety.
So that's the other, I, we understand exactly what you're saying. But what we didn't add that caveat about before two thousand and nine, and the twenty years, then you would have been following the twenty-five or the rule of ninety.
Right, well, I think y'all could grandfather us in like you did when you changed the twenty years to the people that have to work more than twenty now to get their retirement. I would feel, would you be there to grandfather us in?
We are grandfathering you in by adding employees hired before July first, two thousand and nine. Because that wasn't originally, when you just looked at what the consultant presented to us to do. They didn't even do that. So this is an additional thing that we've come back and done, and, and we did that, because you're right. In two thousand and nine, there was a set of rules for the city to get in, insurance, work in twenty years.
Right, and, and employees, even, employees after two thousand and nine have to work twenty-five or twenty-eight years. Those employed after two thousand and fourteen have to work the rule of ninety. So it just, the eligibility changes.
Can you just clarify, because I'm having a hard time following it? To me, if, if an employee was hired between, before two thousand and nine, then whenever there's that timeframe, what did we say, twenty-five years, is that what I understood?
It was twenty years before two thousand and nine.
So whenever that segment i- is in, that's what this should be said, correct?
Right, but in my understanding, is she just, we asked the question, is it gonna add a fifty-five on it? Was what, so that means that if I was hired in two thousand, my twenty years is in two years, but because that's gonna say fifty-five, I would have to work my retirement eligibility time.
Well, well.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it, it.
So you're not retirement-eligible, you won't be retirement-eligible.
Right, it didn't make sense.
You're talking about maintaining insurance after, after leaving two years, not retiring.
I, I'm retirement-eligible in seven years, but if this fifty-five requirement is added on, then I won't be able to take my insurance for fifteen more years, meaning that I will have to work eight years past my retirement just to get insurance that's promised me in all five. Because you're telling me I would have to work till fifty-five to take these.
I'm, I'm a gentleman, I'm never gonna ask your age, okay? But I'm trying to keep up with the numbers here, okay?
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, all right.
But the way I'm understanding it is, if this goes implement, and I would have to work fifteen more years to take my retirement, my insurance with me when I can retire in seven years.
When did you start with the city?
Two thousand.
And, and it will depend on, you know, how old you were when you started, as to, you know, if, if we did institute that age requirement.
Yeah, I just don't think that is fair to those of us. I'm forty, I, I'm trying to say it, but, that's why I'm saying fifty, it'd be fifteen more years. I just don't think that's fair for those of us that, that give you eighteen, twenty, twenty-five years, and now you're telling me I'm gonna have to work eight more just to make, after I, I go to the retirement.
Well, let me know. You'll stop working when you, you're not gonna go work anywhere else, when you stop working with the city at that age.
But I don't wanna work, I don't wanna work thirty years.
You get one point eight-two percent for every year you work past your twenty, or twenty-five or twenty-eight.
That's something we ought to clarify, I don't, I don't know.
I don't wanna work thirty-six years.
I'm ready for your answers.
Y'all get a deal.
That, that's the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd, if I could retire at forty, I'd be happy, I'd be even retired.
Hi, I'm Deborah Martin, also known as DK. I retired in two thousand and twelve from the police department, I was a lieutenant with them. Uh, my question is, uh, under the HRA, uh, you're, uh, saying that we would have to, uh, if that's what's going on, then we would have to, uh, with the use of a navigator, get our own insurance? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My question is, if you have pre-existing conditions, how is that gonna impact you being able to get insurance? You know, I, I've been insured by the city of Columbia since nineteen eighty-seven. So my insurance, and I understand, I, you know, I appreciated that I didn't have to pay, I was a single person, I am a single person. But when I go to look at, I've had some, uh, health issues that have cropped up in the last couple of years. So if I go and look for new insurance, how is that gonna impact me with my, you know, I have pre-existing conditions now? So that's, that's something I would like to have answered, if we can answer that question, please.
So, uh, currently, under the ACA, there are no pre-existing condition exclusions, or, or that, that's, that doesn't factor into whether or not you get cur, coverage or not.
That's still exist, yes, yes.
Yeah. Certainly, no, things can change, and they certainly do. But currently, under the ACA, regulations, pre-existing conditions can't be used to not provide somebody with insurance coverage.
Pam, talk about the, talk about the network in, in this area, well, or someone in, in her. Pam, talk about the, talk about the network in, in this area, well, or someone in, in her situation, or any of our retirees who would be using the navigator. I mean, there's, it's not like we're Florida, as you've often said. In South Carolina, um, there's gonna be the Blues and other, um, groups that would probably, um, be where they would be getting their coverage from. I don't know, and this is a question, um, being that, you know, whatever our work, working relationships are through the navigator with those potential, um, coverages for these folks, if that's something we could inquire about on their behalf, about pre-existing conditions and that sort of thing. I mean, we'll do our best to-
Again, the ACA prohibits people from considering pre-existing.
I understand that, but in her concern, that if that were to go away, and now we, you know, sending them out to the market, is there anything, any considerations that we can discuss with the providers?
Um, I don't know. We'd have to look at that. I'm not sure. I mean, they would be, they would be looking at coverages on the open market. So, whatever those coverages were providing is what would be out there. I, I don't know that we could, you know, have any influence over that, cause if that was the case, we'd be creating our own plan again, and kinda getting back to where we are now. So, I don't, I don't, I don't know that we could influence that in any way.
Uh, thank you. My name is Dan Beatonbaugh. Um, I'm from the private sector. My wife is a retiree here at, here at the city. And it sounds like to me, a lot of this is based on a defined dollar benefit, which was set up in two thousand twelve. And basically, my whole understanding of insurance is the young help pay for the old. And y'all have never had two insurances, one for employees and one for retirees. And this whole meeting, I think most of the retirees are missing it, is now there's gonna be two insurances. And it sounds like y'all are trying to balance your budget by putting a lot of the cost on the retirees, not that you have numbers up here this time. But that's my question is, why not have one insurance that covers retirees and employees?
That's, that's part of the, that's what we have. That's part of the problem. That's why it's costing so much, because it costs us seven hundred dollars for a retiree, when the open market is roughly two hundred in a supplement. We're having to create a program in ourself. That's, that's part of the issue.
And that's because you're covering eighty-eight percent of two thousand people, when you should be covering eighty percent. And you have a lot of retirees, only three hundred, who are, of course, costing you more, because these people have served the city thirty years as firemen, and everything else, have a lot of health issues. And so, a retiree is gonna cost you more. They're older, they're sicker.
In all fairness, it's not, it's not just that. You have to look at it globally in that question, because we've also been supplementing spouses, families, and everything else. So, you can't just say it's just one individual, and that this group is carrying this group, cause that's, that's not true. We've got individuals who have never, or a family, let's use a family of four, who've never cost the city anything really, other than their, their, their premium. But then we got individuals who've cost the city five times what the rest of the groups cost. So, it's just-
Saying that the-
There's not two separate groups.
Employees that cost you less, so that's why they're having a separate-
No, that's not at all what we're saying. What we're saying is, is that we have one, we've had one insurance the whole time. But we've created a program to carry when there's better options that we should be looking at, that provide better coverage and care. We're spending extra money just to cover, which doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense.
As long as, like I say, my, my main concern is the retirees who have served the city for so long, get a fair plan that is affordable.
And that's, that's, that's exactly what we're trying to, we're trying to make it sustainable.
And I, and I, I promise you, that's our concern too. That's the reason we're sitting here.
We're, we're looking at affordability, whether they're with us or they, they're in the private sector.
Let me say this, y'all. And I, and I, and I know, I know, um, this is always a, a tough issue to discuss. And I, I tell myself I'm gonna listen more than I talk today, uh, cause I, I really wanna, and if you have more questions, I want the people to ask their questions too. Hopefully, we'll, we'll, we'll get some more concern, uh, some more concerns, uh, addressed. Uh, this is a, a great deal different than, than what our consultants brought back to us. This is not an exercise in balancing the budget, and, and I, and I always hate when it's, when it's characterized as something that's just as simple as that. This is not balancing the budget. This is indeed, uh, an, an exercise in just pure sustainability. How do we make sure that people have access to health, insurance, courage, coverage as long as we possibly can? And make sure it's affordable for as many of our folks, current employees, retirees, and if we can, their families as well, as long as we possibly can. Cities all across this country are eliminating that insurance coverage, eliminating it, not reducing it, eliminating it. Cities, counties, and states. So, I, 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 I don't want you to think that, that we're going through some callous, uh, um, uh, penciling of, of, of a budget process here, that seeks to deny someone anything. I mean, believe me, if we could, if we could have universal coverage for everybody, uh, with, within, within the, 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 our reach, uh, whether it be city employees, or dependents, or anyone else, we would do that. It is not sustainable. It's not sustainable. So, this is an exercise in, in, in fiscal responsibility, in fiscal courage, in just pure sustainability. How do we make sure that not only do we provide health insurance coverage, but how are we making sure that we're actually able to provide fire protection coverage to the people of the city, police protection coverage, basic services? I mean, that's what this discussion is about. It is not sustainable to look at thirty years down the line and have a billion-dollar, non-pension-related, long-term liability. It's just not. It's just not. And, and it, it would be, it would be not just imprudent, but irresponsible for us to not go through this process and figure out how we can do this in as thoughtful and as fair a way possible. I promise you, that's where our heads are, that's where our hearts are. That's what we're trying to get to. It is a tough process. It's a tough process, not, not just for you all, but for each and every one of us, for the people in, in this room, that many of whom you, you may know, and you, and you, and you love, and have worked side by side with for, for years. But this is not easy, and, and I, I don't want anyone to think it's, it's just us figuring out how to balance, balance our, our budget here. That's not what this is. We, 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 we work side by side with you. I would tell you, there are people in, in, in this room, including several of our employees I interface with every single day, who would be adversely affected to some degree by this, and I love them. I mean, I love them. I, I love them like brothers and sisters. So, I mean, and just like I love you all. So, I, I, so I don't, I don't want you to think it's, 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 that's not the process. We're trying to work through this in some way that makes sense, but still allow the city to, to, to continue to provide services to everyone who's either here, long-term, as well as meeting the needs of our employees. It's a tough one. We're gonna work through it together, but I, but it's not, it's not simply a, a penciling exercise. And so, you've had your hand up a couple of times. You might come to the microphone?
Did he go?
Did he leave?
Where'd he go?
Okay, you can, you can come on up.
Do you have a question?
No, no. Uh, you, you, in the meantime, I want, I want you to go up, sorry, then you can follow him. Don't make, raise his hand back there. If he comes back up, he can, he can, he can go third. Yes, sir.
Rusty Smith, retired assistant chief, Columbia Fire Department, thirty-four years. Good to see you again, everybody. A lot of people are forgetting, I've heard, and I've tried to catch to what everybody's been saying. A lot of people are forgetting the retirees that are extremely ill, who cannot go out and get another job. You're talking about eliminating post-sixty-five coverage for all retirees. I've got a couple of good friends right now that, that can't go out and work. So, here, if you go eliminate that, and their spouse, they're gonna have some problems. I'm the, I'm speaking up for them. And I've heard what this, uh, young lady has been saying about as far as, uh, post-sixty-five going out and getting cheaper coverage, cause there is cheaper coverage out there, but if it is, I'd like to know where it's at. Because, uh, my wife will be seventy next year, and believe me, we've called around, and you're looking at four to six hundred dollars difference higher. We'd, we'd call three, four different companies. So, that's what, you know-
How much, how much higher, chief? How much is that?
It was like four to six hundred dollars higher. We even call United Healthcare. And for what, you know, with the city contributing, what she's paying, I think she's paying two hundred and forty-five or some odd dollars like that. It was almost five hundred dollars. You know, that, I'm sorry, that presents a burden. And, uh, it's, eliminating that's gonna affect a lot of retirees, and a lot of their families, you know, wives, if they got any families left. Which I got a wife, and that's about it. But you go put a real burden, and I know, I understand the city's got a burden, and I've met with Mr. Rickman before, years ago. We didn't agree then. We don't, we don't agree now. I'm sorry.
Well, you know, I, I, I mean, that's unfair. I think that's kinda unfair to say, to say that.
Well, I'm sorry.
Because you, because you, 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 you don't know where we're at. We're in here working really hard.
Yes.
And I'm the one, I think, who brought up the fact that we ought to be looking at not eliminating post-sixty-five.
Yes, you did. Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, let's be fair.
Let's be fair, and you're right, and I apologize for you, with you on that. But let's also think about the retirees who cannot get out there and go to work, who have illness. Okay? And there are quite a few. And if you eliminate that post-sixty-five coverage for all retirees, you're gonna present them with a big problem. That's all I got, sir.
Yes, sir.
The United Healthcare that we have.
To the mic.
It's, United Healthcare that we have, uh, can that be renegotiated any? Because I find that United Healthcare does not pay much of a ben- benefit, part of money to the city. So, if I'm wrong on that, y'all tell me, but I get very little out of United Healthcare. I try not to be too expensive. I was to go through some really rehabilitation, and those people over there was over twelve hundred dollars to start off with. I said, no, because I could see where it was going. Well, I'd just have to go home and do it myself. You know, because I don't want to be that kind of expenditure on the city or nobody else. That's not my nature. You take care of your neighbor. But anyway, is there, can you renegotiate anything with, uh, United Healthcare, and maybe get us a little better situation there, or eliminate those folks and put it on the other people? I love my active firefighters, because I'm ready to die, you know? I made it too. So, these guys here, and that's, that's, essence of the city is your good employee.
We do-
Thank you.
Thank you. We, we do look at our post-sixty-five coverage and try and, and work with, um, the carriers to get us cheaper coverage. But the reality is, we have a very small number of people that we're covering, and they have very high expenses. So, the insurance companies really don't wanna take on that, that responsibility. I don't, I don't know if it's about liking you. I think it's about the dollars and cents of it all. Cause we have a really small population, and when you have a small number, it's more expensive, because you have less people, you know. No offense, Pierre, he's an insurance guy, but, um, you know, it's, it's all about getting in the most participants, and that typically is your cheaper coverage, when you have more participants that are in your coverage.
And, and, and that kinda the advantage that we've heard from some other folks about getting into, to the platform, that, that, I don't know if it's ARRP, whoever, that has the platform with all, there's like, I think there's like twenty-seven different styles of supplement. Cause that's what we're talking about here for retirees supplemental.
Yeah, cause they-
Medicare's first and foremost to get the gap. But, you know, if there is issues with that program, we need to know about that as well as we move forward.
Yeah. But it, it does supplement Medicare. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is David Chine. I'm with the fire department. Um, I just have a quick question of, with the insurance plan set in place right here, how are we gonna recruit? How is this a good means of recruiting and retaining employees? Because a lot of people, they might come in to see this, and, you know, it won't be beneficial to me. I, I give the city twenty-five, thirty years of my life, and at the end of that, while I retire, it's, I'm just going to the, to the wayside. How is this a good insurance plan to retain these good employees on all aspects?
Well, if you've given that much service, then you should probably be grandfathered into that prior to July one, two thousand nine.
I think you're talking about future.
Means respect, means respect. I think you're saying-
Well, that's what I was about to say, but you're exactly right. Um, and it's, that's probably the biggest concern. I was listening to Mayor Benjamin and listening to all of the great comments in here, but the people that are truly impacted by what we're having to do or working right now, they're not in this room, able to, you know, necessarily comment with us right here, right now, cause they're working. But the fact of the matter is, your retirement eligibility still comes into play too. So, that's also what we looked at, trying to balance all this. The reality of it is, you're gonna have to meet that rule of ninety. If you, so will you, would you realistically be working for the city thirty years, twenty-five years? I, I mean, I don't know. Maybe, maybe so.
I, I completely understand. It is a numbers game. But going into, I'm just gonna speak, excuse me, speaking biasedly, but with the fire and police and other departments in the city, you put your body through a different strain than anyone else. You know, I've, I've had friends who fell through floors, had ceilings fall on top of them. Police officers go through a strain. You know, twenty-five, you know, you might start out, um, like my coworker earlier, Mr. Huffstetter, um, said, started out at eighteen, but in ten, fifteen years, your body is to a seventy-year-old just about. And I just, you know, I know, just want you all to just reconsider that.
And I would tell you, we ask, we're asking ourselves those very same questions, uh, not just in recruiting the best, but also retaining the best, and then balancing that against, against just real fiscal realities. And, and, but we ask those same questions, and I would tell you, they're, they're never easy to answer. Thank you.
So, thank you all.
My name is Jeff Dickey. I retired from the police department last year. I'm probably one of the luckier ones, cause I'm younger and I don't have dependents, so this is actually, I could probably pay nothing. I have two questions. If your defined benefit was set in two thousand and twelve, and insurance cost, we saw the chart had gone up, shouldn't the defined benefit go up?
Yes. Yeah. Well, that's the-
The way it was, um, the way it was, um, voted on was that defined benefit would stay the same, and that the retirees' premiums would be adjusted to increase, to keep that DDB the same, which we have not increased retiree, um, premiums to the rate that the cost has increased. So, the DDB was set, and we've been supplementing the difference between what the retirees are paying and what the DDB is. And we haven't been maintaining the DDB, actually. We've been paying more than the DDB the whole time.
What you're planning on keeping going forth right now with that one?
We looked, we talked about maybe looking at adjusting the DDB. I don't know. That might be something that we'll consider.
And my other question is, going back to the twenty years with the city, twenty-five with the, to be eligible for retirement, what if somebody has their twenty with the city, they're not at fifty-five, but they can retire under, say they get disabled? Say they're fifty-two, they've got twenty with the city, haven't met the years, total years for the state, but they can because of disability.
Disability'd be different, though, wouldn't it?
Well, honestly, that's a dilemma that we face, that people face right now. There, everybody who works for the city doesn't necessarily need the eligibility for insurance. If they go out, they could've worked here nineteen years and get injured, and they gotta go out on disability retirement. They're a year short. So, we have to make that call every single day. So, there are some people who work here, who've worked here nineteen, twenty years, and they don't get the insurance, depending on when they came in and when they, when they leave.
But my question is, if they meet the twenty years with the city, and they meet the fifty-five, but they can retire disabled, but they, they don't have the twenty-eight with the, with the state program?
If, if they're retirement eligible, eligible,
With the state.
Whether that's through disability or regular retirement eligible, they'll still be eligible for the insurance. Yeah, they just have to be retirement eligible. So, if they, if they meet all the other requirements, then they could be eligible. I hate to make promises, cause Lord knows, y'all will hold me to them. So, I'm speak, trying to speak in broad terms, cause everybody's situation's different. So, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make a promise that I can't keep.
I'm Brantley Hannah. I'm with the fire department, retired. I've got a, a couple, uh, small questions. First of all, I appreciate all the hard work y'all doing, and, and obviously, we're frustrated, and, and it's very understandably why. We, we now have some tighter budgets, uh, on the retiree side. Uh, we're down to fifty-three percent. I, I heard your note. I've, I've been watching you, and you got your numbers right, uh, half of them. But on the normal percentage, when we're working another- But on the normal percentage, when we're working another year, um, that comes out to be an average, what we've averaged to about another fifty to sixty-five dollars a month for the average employee, depending on where you're at, but I just worked some numbers before I left. That's, that's not enough so far to pay for these expenditures. Um, if, if I have a expense right now, if I lower my wife, if I drop her off for coverage right now because she gets a job, I can't add her on. I can't add her back on in two years. And so, that's thinking, the idea that, hey, if, if my wife has coverage, or my dependents have coverage, namely, my wife, will we be able to add her back on if she doesn't have that good job maybe in two years? I think that's something we, we've not talked about yet, but as of right now, if I drop her, we cannot add her back on. If I go to a lower coverage, I can never get the higher coverage. Am I right so far? Good, so we wanna execute, we wanna see if we can get all that. So, if we're talking about being fair and you want to reward me for being a good, maybe a healthier employee or post-employee, you know, as a retiree, I think it would be responsible to add that, whichever the, the initials were, to carry over. If you're gonna give me a thousand dollars or fifteen hundred dollars, we were talking about, would it, would it go over, would there be a cap? Would it get put back in the big fund? Okay, it, it would only be responsible to, because I didn't get kidney stones this year, but I'm gonna get them next year. You know what I mean? And so, we're only, it's, it's a Russian roulette game, and I think that's.
You mad I'm having?
But if, if we're, if we're saying, hey, part of the new budget is to give him this amount of money, I think it would be responsible to let me keep another balance to, to move forward.
To roll it over, is that what you're talking about?
We're gonna take that, that retiree's wife or, or spouse and put him or her out because they have suitable coverage, whatever that suitable coverage is, we've gotta be able to allow them back in if those, they lose their job, or with the state if they lose their job. It's gotta be a little bit more of a better system. Here's the last thing I want to say, because again, y'all got a tough job, man, I really do appreciate it. I've been watching you for my whole career, and the number one word you have always said is yours constituents, your constituents, your constituents. And now, that's exactly who we are. We're not employees of the city anymore. We're, we're y'all's constituents. And so, we're actually the people y'all are going to work for, and it's more than just a numbers game, and it's not just as easy. Because the whole time when the rates were going up with insurance, that same eight years, we weren't getting raises in the city. It was a huge amount of time, and so, so that's just where we were, and that's not the throw stones. But there's a lot of things, that's, that's eight years that we weren't able to contribute more to the four oh one or the four fifty-seven to get to a point where we can handle these extra fees. The last thing is, is I don't know what it costs to operate, um, some of the different departments or to train them in their positions, but I know how much it costs to train a firefighter. I know how much it costs after four months in a recruit school to train a, a policeman, and some of the higher, or your architect that Mr. Vine, Mr. Vine was talking about, or your engineers. And when we potentially have a mass exodus of the employees that you have right now, because they're saying, hey, this stinks, this is not what I was in for, you're not, it's not gonna happen to the twenty-year employee, this only got eight to go. But the guys from zero to ten, whatever that is, I think that should be part of your study. How much extra is it gonna cost Chief Jenkins in his budget that he don't have already? In the five-year plan that he just tried to add last week, saying, hey, we're gonna be the best in the city, we're gonna be the best over the next five years, but I'm staying lower in here because it's costing me so much in my budget, and hey, I need more money, which we don't have because we're spending on healthcare. There's a lot more parts of the moving parts that we've gotta see. And I think there's more stuck parts of the study, because there's gonna be a mass exodus. I'm telling you, it's coming, that's all they're talking their whole face about, that's all the young guys are talking about. You know, and as that's smart, that they leave, I'm not saying it is. I, I'm, I'm not agreeing with them, because I want them to have that cushion of a pension one day. We don't have a lot of pensions out there, but for the ones that, she said it very clear, that can go to the private sector, especially some of the mechanics and some of the engineers, some of the architects, and make more money, you can't sell them on the idea, because this is why we're here the whole time, when we loved it, and it was a good job for good benefits. Nobody ever got rich with any of the jobs, including y'all's, in the city, ever. But we always talk about the benefits, and it stinks now, because when we get to this age, we can't do as much. I, I think a lot of, of play into it, but when we're talking about how much money is it gonna cost to train the people that are leaving because of this new plan, and it's not just, I know in the, the first part, we said, hey, these guys are not getting charged as much, the active, but they're saying, hey, in, in twenty-five years, I need to go make me more money so I can invest properly, if they do or not. Uh, but I'm going to invest more money so I can handle my healthcare in the future. Because it's, this is coming again in two years. I mean, it's, we're gonna be sitting back at the table. But I, I, I ask you that to consider to try to maybe keep one of the lower statuses, or some of the lower stuff. Um, and, and yeah, there's some great questions in here, what we do with our spouse, what we do with that HRA money, or, you know, the accounts. Um, but I mean, it's, it's coming, it's coming, and depending on what decisions y'all make. Now, y'all gotta make decisions, I get it, and, and tough, tough job, I appreciate your hard work, I really do, I mean that sincerely. But the decisions that are made next Tuesday night and over this budget concerning this insurance is gonna affect how much of your budget is about to get busted. It's coming. And I think the train that's coming down the track is just where we're getting off. But I, I appreciate your hard work, I really do.
Thank you.
Well said.
Hey, I'm C.O. Clark, I've been here since nineteen eighty-two. And when I came, when, of course, the big pitch was I'd never had to pay for insurance in my life, well, I can understand that. The world as it changes as it is, uh, as it's going on today, everything gets nothing but more expensive. When y'all are sitting down and thinking about how we're going to proceed for the employees that come in the future and us, that's, I just turned sixty-two. So, I'm a pre, uh, sixty-five, but in three years, I will be post-sixty-five. So, of course, I'm a little interested, uh, in the, uh, things that we're, that you're looking at with the HCA and HRA, excuse me, and, uh, things. Will the HA, HRA, will y'all be doing a yearly update on that to reflect the actual cost of any increases, uh, as the year, year? Whether it be good or bad, you know, inflation sometimes goes up, sometimes goes down. Will y'all be adjusting that figure on a yearly basis, or is it like the DB, uh, what is the DBB that hasn't changed since twenty-twelve?
Then the HRA will be what's, what the DDB is, whatever that's determined to be.
Well, what I'm getting at is, if it's eleven hundred and thirty bucks, uh, for today, if twenty years insurance doubles, will the H, uh, R A still stay the same, or will you reflect actual increases in the increases, uh, for the healthcare?
We can't raise that, or else it would raise our O P E D liability out the roof.
The, 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 the numbers would, they'd take no, that you, that would, it would not adjust, just as we established, uh, defined dollar benefit to keep down those long-term liability numbers. However, just as we're discussing here, this council or future councils can determine otherwise, and, and that, but, but my, but, but theoretically, the answer would be no, because if you did, if you did, then you would obviously be increasing that long-term liability. But that's not, that, this council may change its mind in the future, and, and, and future councils may as well.
Um, not envy us, y'all at all, having to make this decision.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Good afternoon, uh, like many have said before, uh, my name's Victor Kemper, I'm a fire captain with the fire department. Uh, like many have said before, um, this is a very difficult time, I understand healthcare decisions are, are the most terrible decisions. I mean, it affects all of our lives. You guys get health insurance too, you're voting on what, what to do with your wives and their health insurance and, and things as well, and I understand that. But, um, I encourage you to, Councilman Rickman talked about an obligation to continue to think about that obligation uh, for these guys who have come in and fought fire for twenty years ago, and now their bodies are breaking down. That there's gotta be a way to find, to find a way to fund healthcare for them, even if that means, um, finding new revenue streams that we've talked about in the past and in the future. Um, I know that, um, in the past, you've, you've done S, S E and G's franchise fee or something like that. I don't know how that would work, that's your guys' field of play, you know? But I can tell you that as it stands, um, Hannah was right, that, um, if, if you do change it for active employees or retirees, you'll find that many employees will leave, they'll have no reason to stay. Uh, fire employees, um, and police, um, have the opportunity to work for a different department. And, uh, without having those twenty-five years here, or a reason to stay for twenty, twenty-five years, um, they can go wherever. And that means, uh, the prisons or anything like that, same with the fire departments throughout the Midlands, and Charleston is just putting out vacations. I encourage you to look at those things and think hard. We're the ones who've protected the city for years, and then we hope to continue to do so, but we have to pick our families first. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. All right, other questions from Mr. Benjamin?
I think too, it's.
Guys, I would tell you, those questions and answers are very helpful as well too.
It's a long list.
Very helpful in concerns.
Yes, sir, they were very helpful, and, um, you know, we are constantly doing our homework, we'll go back and do some more, and, you know, I, I would say, though, that the city is not that much different from other agencies. I mean, you're gonna find a gamut of how people are handling, um, post-employment benefits and active, and we've been right up there with the, the best of the best. Um, so, I hope and pray we don't see a mass exodus. I would venture to say that agencies similarly situated to us are not necessarily going to be this plethora of healthcare benefits, because everybody's facing the same issues we are. Um, but we, we, we hope that's not the case.
And sometimes the salary's better for people that live in Charleston, but they live in Charleston. So, the cost of living is higher in Charleston, so everything is relative with that.
Pays more salary-wise? Well, I'm talking about the healthcare cost, so that's what the issue was about if you leave to get the healthcare. For the moment. For the moment.
I think what I'm also speaking of, you got people not just going back to fire jobs or to police jobs, you got people going to find better job, better paying jobs. You know, if it's a little dirty job, or if it's at Michelin, or if it's at other places, that might fit some of their roles. But in the past, when I first came here, no one would leave. And, and the reason that sort of changed was, we started changing some things, and we're like, hey, why are you looking for a job where it's better out on the outside? And it's not completely better, when they go to change some of those things, you made a comment that was well taken with me, you said, hey, I'd like to think that all those benefits are not just, but they don't know that. They don't know that until they leave and go, and then they sometimes, yeah, couldn't left, but regardless, they left. Yet, there is coming, I'm just telling you, it just depends on, it's coming anyway. Uh, Mr. Rickman made the comment that people don't stay in the jobs anymore. I mean, I, again, I don't think average young person understands the, the, the significance of a pension, regardless of how they.
That's it.
But regardless, if they do or don't, it's coming. It doesn't matter if they're dumb, or if they're smart, or if they're great, or if they're unadvised, or if they're advised, they're still quitting, which is costing the city money in another area where we're trying to save money. So, it doesn't matter why they're going, or if they're smart, or if they're great, what if they're dumb? They're still leaving.
But our.
And what can we do to retain them? And, and your plan says, hey, I'm going out, and I'm going doing this, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do this, oh, by the way, you got a lot more money, it's gonna be costing you. And I'm telling you, that's a tough thing, especially when they say, hey, I'm gonna do all this for this long, and I'm gonna be broke at the end. I, I just think it should play into your thing, again, I know you gotta do something, something's gotta happen.
Well, part of it's state law rules too, and again, we said earlier, we're looking at the population and trying to balance it based off who's truly gonna be impacted, because the, the state law would say now, you're gonna have to stay. So, are people really going to do that, if you're gonna meet the rule of ninety, for example? So, I mean, there's lots of things that play or other than just because we're gonna make this, whatever decisions we make right now. It's also about others' decisions that we have to follow to be retiree, retirement eligible. If, unless we say you don't have to be retirement eligible, we haven't said that.
Yeah, and again, you know, retirement eligibility has changed significantly.
Yeah, but, but, all, 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 all things, again, said, that is sage advice.
Mm-hmm.
It's good.
It is.
I, I just wanna, I want to encourage you all that we're all having those same conversations. I mean, I mean, about employee recruitment, about employee retention, about, um, obligations to retirees, about quality of life, about families. I mean, those, these, 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 these are not, um, black and white numbers on, 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 on a sheet. We're, we're, we're discussing all those things, and I would tell you, even the, the, the presentation here today is, is, is a far stretch from, from, uh, the different plans that have been presented to us over time, we're trying our best to, to, to take into account all these concerns. But you're right, some of the, some of the long-term concerns, uh, regarding pensions or the possibilities regarding pensions, a lot of young employees don't think about that, uh, down, down the road, and they should, a, a lot more focus on that. But just again, I want to make sure y'all, y'all know that this is a, um, this is a living, breathing discussion that, that we're trying to, to balance some very challenging global, um, fiscal issues, uh, that, that others have decided they're just gonna punt on. Oh, no, absolutely, and it's helped us, I mean, and, and we've had a, I, I would tell you, we've had a vigorous dialogue, uh, uh, amongst, uh, council members individually and, and collectively, and, and, and my guess is, we're gonna continue to do this more of that. But it's been helpful, very helpful, thank you. All right.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone. Um, the next part of the presentation is regarding the proposed budget. Mr. Mayor and Missy Kaufman, Budget and Program Management Director, will come forward to present the fiscal year two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen proposed budget.
Ms. Ellen, she got me some love all around the country.
Oh, I should have done that at the beginning. She's here.
Which means, everybody is, is, is protecting them.
Please do. Okay.
Adjustments to what they, they gotta make adjustments to what they offer, they gotta make adjustments to whether or not, well, based on what they call, define as being competitive. It's a tough thing. Still don't get this promise.
I will. Uh-oh, he gotta wash that off.
Oh, no, they, so you have to click on a button at the bottom, so they don't automatically populate you on the comment section, so they can show up.
Yeah, all three of y'all have come and said that to me, I will. I should have done it at the.
I could have started.
Not in my office, but I'll get them for you. I do have some of those filthy stuff, hold on. I was thinking about that myself. I was thinking about the same thing, Daniel.
Well, we, no, hey, hey, we've been supplementing now. And, you know, the question comes is, do you agree with me that this is my responsibility, or this is my responsibility? That's, that's gonna make the difference. I didn't realize that how much we were supplementing. I think, I think if we look at that, I bet we could take care of all the employees. Hundred percent of them.
Mm-hmm. Do we, do we expect?
I think we could.
Are we, are we able to say to the employees, these are opposite employees in the private sector? We don't, we don't-
To run and go work for somebody else. I mean, private sector's not providing healthcare. I mean, you know, no offense, but-
Oh, yeah.
Two questions.
Calm everything, the basket.
Now, your microphones are still on.
Oh.
Yes, sir. Hello, sir.
How you doing?
Doing well. We checking on the frozen.
Okay.
Well, we, we're looking at pictures, and Joe's got some folks going out there. Matt went out, Matt called one out there earlier. He said a water supply cut it on, the leak had turned just a little bit, charged a lot, and then it, it's, I don't think there's an active leak right now, but they may have, we've been doing, we're having a-
You know, I would, I-
She, she- What do you want?
Well, definitely, we're wanting, you know, you know-
They don't, and by the time they get, well, by the time they give to their board of directors, they've not stayed, they've not been in a place where they're first, where they're already in their, is anywhere they get to them, they're in their building, of course.
No.
I guess when it shows up.
I'm not clear.
It's easier. I mean, that's what other practitioners do. They supplement the employee, and you have spouses, kids, you pay the, whatever number is, it is. Search, hundred dollar search.
I mean, all the spouses. Well, what you're talking about, so let's, let's look at the whole idea about the DVD, get away spouse to the beginning, all this. At the end of the day, it's eleven forty, eight twenty, whatever it is. That's the amount we have to work with. If we were to take all of that and move it to the retirement, we're just gonna make sure that's, that's accurate. But then that also-
Macari's a-
I'm gonna wait, I take that back. Might not be able to do it, definitely. Yeah.
Well, what about CNBC?
We've been supplementing, that's why I get frustrated, somebody like-
But Macari's and CNBC, he's based.
Your spouse, ten thousand years. And that wasn't the deal.
Man, anything I didn't catch it. Well, I-
On the CPE, man, according to-
Thirty-six thousand.
You can't, you can't retire. Not delayed or-
She's a thing, the thing- You gotta hit it seven houses.
Any grants?
Yeah, that's your deal. Larry, Larry, you, in that, in that-
We started coming through.
Ah, man. Are we, uh, waiting on?
Cooper's just talking about it.
Yeah.
I'm talking to this labor board meeting.
Oh, how's it going?
But it's different too, because we were competing against-
Have fun.
We're not competing against the public sector, because they're not offering-
Who's meeting?
Over time. Yeah, but he comes first.
I love a district rep, he goes first.
He doesn't understand us.
Makes it. I love it.
Ed, Ed's gonna ambush you.
Are gonna stay in the city for fifteen-
I love it, I love it, I love it.
I mean, they, they don't hold you guys responsible. They hold us accountable.
Regardless of what happens with healthcare.
And, um, Teresa, we waiting on me, or we waiting on?
Are we ready now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Now, it's four o'clock.
I lost the audience for this conversation, so. No, that's fine. Keep moving on. We just wanna keep fun. Um, today is our, our final budget workshop before we have the public hearing. The budget has been advertised, both the budget, um, as lo, as well as the water and sewer rate, um, ordinance has been advertised, and then, um, the-
The water and sewer rap was the longest thing I've ever seen.
Was that not a big ordinance? It's the whole ordinance, it's the whole-
Tell who's got the money, the water and sewer people advertise it.
Oh, no question.
Okay. So today, we're gonna talk about the proposed budget. We'll be talking about the general fund. Uh, then we also have our enterprise funds, which is water, sewer, stormwater, and parking, each three separate funds. Our special revenues include hospitality tax and accommodations tax. We do not have CIP with me, us today, but we'll present you all the CIP, the capital improvement program, which we have a capital improvement program for water and sewer and for stormwater. Those will be ready for you during the public, um, budget, public hearing for next week. So just to refresh everybody, where we have landed with our budget is the total operating budget of the general, of the, of the City of Columbia is proposed at three hundred and forty-six million, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. Of course, general fund and water and sewer make up the larger, I'm sorry, what was that? General fund and water and sewer make up the largest portion of that budget. Water and sewer is, um, now exceeding the general fund, um, in terms of the largest piece of the pie. As already has been mentioned, this budget has been met with a dose of reality. We're also trying to seek some resiliency in terms of what we're doing going forward and some sustainability. So a number of the decisions and other actions in terms of balance this budget are meeting in both of these areas. Starting with, of course, the general fund. Um, and what we're really doing today is just sort of highlight for you those things that have happened since the last budget discussions. This isn't intended to be a complete overview of the entire budget, um, which we'll be preparing for the public hearing for next week. So the general fund budget is in balance. At this point, it was advertised at a hundred and forty-eight million, one hundred and one thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars. A total of increase of five point four million, about four percent. I want to point out that the largest portion of that five million dollar increase, four million of that is for the capital improvement program. The capital improver, improvement program is in, originally targeted at eight million dollars per year, so we borrow eight million, and then we spend eight million. In the current year seventeen eighteen, it was only four million. So when we adjust it back up, um, to the eight million, that accounts for that four per, four million. If it weren't for that increase in the capital improvement program, the general fund budget would only be increasing one point four million dollars. That's less than one percent over the current year budget.
Question on the, the, uh, the re, the reduction. I guess, you know, do we, will we know what, what in the capital improvement area is impacted as a result of borrowing?
So the general, so you mean, well, the capital, the, the, the program they're referring to is the capital replacement program, and that's for our rolling stock. And occasionally we also do a capital, um, some technology upgrades, like when we have to replace our, refresh our desktops or major heavy equipment. So this, in this case, what we're referring to for the eight million is our fire trucks, lease cars, gar, garbage trucks, um, our, our traffic engineering boom trucks, um, heavy, it's heavy equipment. Um, it's also some investigator cars. So it's the things that, it's, and it's just replacement of existing. Occasionally, maybe some new equipment in there, but pretty much is just to help us retain and, or, or be able to, um, replace our, our, and upgrade, our, keep our fleet refreshed.
I'm sorry, I was thinking improvement. You're, you're-
Yeah. So this is capital replacement, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Of course, the budget was balanced without a property tax increase proposed. Um, it reflects funding to maintain our current minimum service levels. In other words, we are maintaining existing operations. This is not taking into account reducing operations, nor really expanding upon or, um, adding new services. Growth is limited to increased costs for operations, and actually, it's even less than what the cost would be in the sense of, um, the CPI, um, if you take into account, as mentioned, the four million, that, uh, the budget increased less than one percent over the current year. The bu, the budget development goals are resiliency, sustainability, and being able to provide quality services that we provide on a daily basis to our citizens and residents and customers.
So, we get into this trap all the time, and, you know, no proposed tax increase, but we are having increases.
Yes. Yes.
Correct.
Yes, that's right. So the increase, what, what accounts for the, in other words, the increase is being covered within the even increase of the revenues that we have, or by decreasing costs in other areas.
Where, where are we on attacking the four thousand parcels?
Um, actually, we have a little bit about that where we're gonna talk about towards the end of the general fund piece, but we can go ahead and jump to there.
I think it's important as we're talking about-
Sure.
Funding and costs.
Right. So, um, let me go ahead and just jump to that slide, and we can come back. So what we have been talking about, we've proposed a couple of different things with, with you all in terms of some new fees and some other options. What we have found through our discussions is that several of these fees, in order to meet the requirements to be a new, of, a, a new fee and not just a tax replacement, is it really needs, bottom line is, it needs to cover those things for new, for new costs and new services. So what we are looking at more is a newer, is, is some new programs and new activities that we have talked about with you all with regards to our smart city initiatives, some of the public safety enhancements, some of the expansions of our emergency operations, as well as our general capital improvements and our investments in the in-city, city infrastructure. So what, um, city manager is proposing is to be able to develop with you a schedule for those continued conversations so that we can bring to you a program that would help us to utilize resources to both, for, for either new resources or reprogramming existing resources, to be able to implement some of the programs we talked about. Smart city initiatives to be, um, is one example, or some of the public safety enhancements.
Wouldn't you put, if you call it a smart city initiative, wouldn't you put some of the public safety enhancements we're looking for in emergency operations all under that front?
That's what we're talking about.
That's the goal.
Yes, that's the, that's the goal. That's the goal. Would you, um, as you go on these slides, are you referencing them by number, so to me you can follow as well?
Yes, I'm sorry. So now we are on, oh, the slide numbers have jumped off. Slides are missing. So now we've jumped to the slide that says future discussions on identifying funding. Let me see if I can number it real quick. Numbers are going now.
So, back to my initial question, how are we handling those? I think we need to handle those in this budget.
Well, it won't be in this budget because part, that's, to get to what Mr. DeVall's also saying, is that those would be for new costs and new expenses. So as we put together-
You're talking about the existing four thousand parcels.
Right, and also-
They're not paying an equal amount. They need to pay a higher fee structure to offset the cost. It is not fair to continue to carry that burden on the homeowners. And the businesses, our commercial districts that are, are nonprofits are struggling. You look at a triple net lease today, what it's costing somebody. Because of the way the tax structure is, and we're continuing to allow this non-taxpaying base growth, so what are we doing about it? We have no real growth. We have no real growth. So, I mean, our plan this year, we need to overhaul the way we, we do business. And I'm talking about DDRC and all these impediments that are, are, are continuing to, we're getting complaints about. But we also need to attack, and we're a government city, and we're drowned in by nonprofits. And so they need to pay a fair share. And we need to address it, and it needs to happen now, not later.
So I'm, I would love to have included that in the budget. Um, a couple of the items we looked at, we've also gotten some legal advice on, so that's why I'm looking back at Teresa again. But I think the approach we were taking so that we can, you know, do it, um, and, and be very, you know, careful about how we do it and what we present to you, was to take it sort of under advisement and work it into the discussion that you've asked for with your upcoming budget work, well, they're not budget workshops, but economic development type workshops, and see how we can roll it in. If we do it that way, though, it would be working towards that in the nineteen, twenty budget. But now, unless we're able to get a different answer than given so far.
We need another bill. Billing it is also gonna be an issue. How do we actually bill individual parcels for this?
I got a great way. Enhanced water.
That was discussed last time.
Disgust, and so-
You pay a premium.
Probably a favorite way to do it, last time we had this discussion, so.
What was that? I'm sorry, was that the answer?
So-
Enhanced water services. Enhanced water services for non-taxpaying.
So we, we, we absolutely agree. We, based on the direction that we have and the information we were given, in terms of looking at these fees, to be able to cover new costs and new programs, how we structure them is really what we're getting. And so some of these would be some of the discussions Wilson addressed. So we've talked about the streetlight fee, we've talked about some nonprofit type of fees, impact fee or.
We're struggling.
We don't disagree. Especially in terms of.
We're struggling.
Please.
We're getting drowned and, you know, we got everything from Bailey Bill to.
So have we looked at, we got a bunch of properties coming off Bailey Bill sometime soon, too. That's, that's, that's.
We hope.
Keep in mind, there's no hope where they are. The, so the staff, as related to Daniel's question, have we come up with some different formula as to how we might calculate that going forward?
We have, we have formulas for one of them at least, as we've investigated. One of the other ones more for the nonprofit pieces. We've looked at two different options, and so it's really a matter of having more discussions with you all.
And what was the other one? Surface area or was that, what were the other?
So some's a service area, some is basically particular types of services. Particular types of services, particular types of areas. To be able to do most of those, you have to have a pretty calculated cost of that service and how that service is getting a higher level of service and what's being paid right now. So it's just the different factors that we're looking at, and then in terms of which direction we go, it's a matter of talking with city council more directly in terms of the directions. Like earlier, when we've had conversation, there was maybe not as much of an interest of putting a, a fee on our water bill, but if it's not on our water bill, to be able to look at something more of a bill type of services.
Not on our water bill, their water bill.
Sure.
Let's specify that.
You're right. That's exactly right. So none of these kind of conversations as we've come through.
And I think the idea to Mr. Rickaman is to not stop. I mean, I don't want you to think we're slowing down at all on it, to continue to do the research with all the input we need from legal and everyone else, but to move forward with something in place, you know, say by October, so that you're educating the public, you know, if we were to do it now.
I think that's fine.
It would be, it would, you know, two out of one, people would say, hey, no, we don't.
Fiscal year, because I'm telling you, our constituency are, they're stumped in these guys. I mean, the commercial.
You guys don't like to talk, you don't like when we talk about whether it's student housing tax abatement or other tax abatements. Reality is that, is that our, our, our commercial taxes because of, because of residential property taxes being capped by, really affecting them capped by 388, and the disproportionate amount of property not on the tax rolls here, vis a vis probably every other city in, in the, in the state, has led to a significant disproportionate amount of tax burden being borne by our commercial citizens. It's, it's just real, and, and, and that grows every time the university or the hospitals or anyone else takes something off the tax rolls. Or church for that, for that matter, taking a, taking a, a shopping center, a shopping center, yeah. I mean, it's just real. And, I mean, it's not, it's not subjective, it's objective, it's math. And we've got to be thoughtful as to how we, we address that, so. And I think we, I mean, I think honestly even the previous discussion just underscores this one, just being very deliberate and intentional, and coming up with a formula that's, that makes, that makes sense, that's fair to all parties involved.
Right.
And to start discussing it as a body.
We would do that. I mean, we've already been working on it, but I don't want you to think just because it's not encompassed in this budget that we're going to slow down at all for any of the information.
So the projection, if I understand, the projection here is to push forward and look at 2020.
The FY 2019, 20 budget. We'll continue to have these discussions with some workshops with you all, economic development matters, et cetera, and probably by October timeframe, you know, have some recommendations in place that we could actually implement with the next budget cycle.
And that was proposed, that's what was highlighted in, in your cover memo, Ms. Wilson, in terms of evaluating both revenue, just resources in general, whether it's new revenue streams or existing revenue, existing, you know, reallocations of cost in terms of being able to put forth some of these new initiatives. Obviously, our goal in terms of being able to sustain this budget is being able to maintain the services we have, but obviously there's a desire, an equal desire to add and grow some of our services and our programs, and being able to identify the resources to do that with. And that's going to take a joint conversation with you all, for certain, for certain. If somebody could help me out with this, Ms. Devine, in terms of the page numbers, I'm going to back up to the revenue slides. I don't know what slide number that is in terms of the complete package because it included the memo as well as the other attachments. I don't know if Erica can see it on the, can you see it on the actual PDF of the screen? Okay.
Missy, I can find the slide number. If you just say the title, I'll, I'll be able to find it.
Okay. This is FY 1819 general fund, and it's the revenue slide. It's got a bar chart. It's page 22 of the packet. So revenue totals for the general fund are proposed at 129.3 million. That's an increase of 2.6 million or right at 2%. And of course, the largest increase is in property tax revenues, which are projected at 1.7 million, which is about 3% increase over current year budget. You can see in the terms of the way we've stacked our revenues, general fund revenue sources, the primary sources are property taxes, and then, of course, from permits and licenses. Transfers in, the capital lease proceeds is 8 million, which increases, which is the increase, as we mentioned, from eight, the 4 million to the 2 million, the 8 million for the capital lease program, which is our capital replacement program. Then we also have the use of fund balance. We've reduced that from 3 million to 1.7 million, and that was also in order to help sustain our goal of sustainability and be able to use less of our fund balance, which we are also, need to make sure that we have the fund ba, fund balance to be able to meet that through that, our targeted projection, 15%. Pardon?
When will we have a fund balance number?
For, for 18?
Yeah.
Several months.
After we finish the year and then sort of later.
Once we can get through the audits, yeah.
So we've already, we bid into last year, the 30 million you set aside last year.
We don't have, oh, you mean excess fund balance?
That's right.
Yeah, no, we had zero. We, we finished last year at a slight deficit of, what was the number, 3?
It's in the package. It's in the budget package that you have.
Yeah.
It's in the budget that you have in your package. So with that as well, and then too, of course, our 15% target, you know, is based on revenue, so that, that 15% target increases every year that our budget increases. So going forward on general fund again, looking at the expense side, department budgets total 123 million. Of course, as you all know, as we were bringing the budget forward to you, balancing the budget, the budgets, the 123 million reflects a reduction of 6.7 million in healthcare costs. That's both from plan design changes as well as liability changes and from also the credit we are anticipating to receive from state retirement for the increase in the state retirement system rates. Right now, the department budgets that are before you do not reflect that reduction, pending upon final sort of actions on that decision, and so we will adjust department's budgets accordingly. We've also eliminated funding in, from the bu, the department requested budget that was, has been presented to you over the past several months. We've eliminated 3.5 million in new requests for department programs and services, as well as an additional 1.5 in requested budgets. So those were primarily the items used that were helping us to balance this budget on top of some of the revenue increases that were projected earlier. This does include continuation of the city's pay for formant, pay for performance merit program of 1 million in the general funds portion. That's for the employees in the general fund. Of course, the other funds have funds in there as well for those employees.
A question. What is the, are we doing a COLA this year or what?
So the proposal is for merit.
Merit.
I was, I was looking at the salary ranges and differences on the department budgets. Seems like it was relatively modest, so that's.
That's correct. Right, and those numbers.
In every department.
Every department's budget will actually end up going down from what's on your list right now because we, once we reflect the changes for healthcare, but otherwise, and healthcare was primarily the only increase in the department's budget. They, the cost of living was included in the current year budget.
So, looking at the jail detention, did we ever get the numbers that we requested last October?
Which numbers?
From, from the county, which.
We get monthly information.
The former million dollar director had promised us numbers because if they're charging us $30 a day, they're saying that we put 20,000 people in jail.
It's not, no, it's, it's the, it's per day, per person. So if you're in there for five days, you get that $25 per person, right?
You get $30.
We get a listing every year, every, it's anywhere from as high, as low as 900 to 1,500 inmates per month.
I guess my struggle is, is we never gotten the paperwork to show what they're charging each entity because they should be charging themselves the same amount because we're all paying equally into for the jail. We paid for the jail with bonds that the city employees paid, I mean, the city constituents, taxpayers. And we, we are continuing, I want to see the numbers before we pay them any more money. Every contract that we've had with them, we've been scrutinized and gone painfully through a discussion with them. And never once can we get the jail numbers, even when Kit Smith was on council, and we never could get them. Howard, you might could get them from him, but the rest of us can't.
So we, we don't, you're saying we don't know what they're charging themselves in terms of.
Well, I'm curious, are they charging, or are they just charging the other municipalities in it? And, you know, that's double taxation. I mean, we just, it's, five years ago, seven years ago, it was $230,000. It's 600 today.
Yeah.
I don't know who you ask, but.
Well, that, that would be good information to, I don't know.
Ask again if you can't get it, then, then Sarah can pull it.
She'll send us the bill.
No, let's ask again. Spirit of original cooperation like we always do.
We can share some of the information that we get to on a monthly basis. So non-departmentals total 6.3 million. Of that, 1.2 million increase, 23%, the larger of that being the proposed increase for the debt service payment, or the, the payment for the capital lease program. The current year, the, we've maintained current funding levels for external agencies, which includes the Alvin Escalante Detention Center at 600,000. That's the current amount in this year's budget. We increased it in the current year to reflect their increase in the per inmate per day rate in the current year, and so far we're able to sustain that amount. Public defender is 100,000. The solicitor is in at 215,000. And then the homeless services maintained at 1 million, which of course, that includes four different contracts that the city supports with it, with those funds. Transfers out total 17.8 million. That includes 3.2 million increase, again, 4 million of that is for the, or 8 million of that is for the capital replacement program. It also includes our debt service payments and transfers to the component units. I do want to point out that, again, this year in the budget, there is no funding for capital improvement program for the general capital projects. We've already discussed the additional resources. Next is talking about affordable housing. City council in January adopted affordable housing program. It was estimated that about 350,000 would be from the general fund. What we're proposing is that we would use a portion of yet to be determined savings from this fiscal year, should there be any for that, towards that funding in the interim. There are funds being used from other grants to help fund.
Are we doing SSR credit for housing?
Commercial, if it's commercial, we should, we could and should.
I mean, we keep talking about putting money in these things. Why aren't we creating that same atmosphere?
Oh, I, I, I think we should, I think the exact same approach we're taking with student housing, we should take to affordable housing. We ought to be able, we ought to give folks.
Incentive.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And so, I mean, it's not just going to our back because obviously we're, we're, you're talking about, you know, 100% nothing versus a, a portion of something.
And we, we could do that. I'd be someone to deal with the other, but.
That was, that was included in, that was included in the memo I sent everybody last year.
Yeah. We need to also still get the county and school to.
Well, that's why, that's why we have, we need to figure out how we can do that, like you do a multi-county, where it's just a county, we're not getting that discussion, they pay the full rate and then we credit them back, and then that way it's, it's an easy, clean deal and everybody understands it.
The thought, the thought, the proposal before was to incentivize mixed use, mixed income housing. And if we didn't, it's commercial, then yeah, it would qualify for whatever tax abatement we had attached to it, if it was a 50% for 10 years or what have you, but try to really aggressively go after, you know, what we want, not what people want to give us. And I think you create that environment, I think you'll see the same type of, because especially.
If you make them pay the 6% and you credit it back, then they actually got to deliver.
And then, and then, and then they'll also get the, potentially the 4%, you know.
Right.
Program through state housing. I mean, it, you could really, this is, this is create a tool and, and just put it out there and see what happens. We, we wind up, yeah, with.
This is what we can do. Here it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, and then again, it's, and it's no money out of, out of our pockets. We just create the environment and see what the market will bear. I think people rush in with, with, with housing, we can incentivize the 60% to afford, 60% to 120% AMI if we want to. I mean, so you, so you're capturing, you know, working families all the way up to, you know, to, you know, ambitious young professionals or what have you. Again, that, that was, that was in the mix last year, and the goal, the thought then was let's, let's see if we can incentivize it heavily and all across the city. I mean, that's, so not, so we're not concentrating in, in, in one district, let's see if we can find four, four areas and all across town, and you, if, if you tell people what you want and what you're willing to incentivize, not just what they want to bring, then I think you wind up with, with much nicer product and, and it'll be borne by the private sector, not by the bogus sector.
And that's the difference. Excuse me, slam, go ahead. That, that's the difference between doing the student housing abatement versus what you're talking about, us coming up with areas that we won't develop and type of development we won't and incentivizing that. I can go with that. I can't go with student housing.
Well, that was on, I'll, we'll put it back on the table again. I, I don't mind, let's, let's refresh that memo, but the, it's important to note that the first round of student housing, we did a couple of years ago, while it may not have been location specific, it was very specific in what we were willing to incentivize in terms of the amount invested, in terms of, in terms of design and review and the like, and, I mean, it was, it was very specific. It was not location specific. But, but no, I think, I think, again, it's, it's telling people what you want and, and not making it overly restrictive so that there, there's, there's, there's no opportunity to, to earn profit there, so the private sector didn't want to come there, but let's, let's build a, build a mass trap and get the heck out of the way and let's see what the private sector will bear.
Yeah. I, I had a guy that called me last week, said that he's got, I think there's federal dollars for affordable housing, and I think also they were looking at Sega family models. The mix includes rent to buy. The mix includes rent to buy, that's, that's kind of iffy sometimes. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But everything else I'm, I'm seeing out there on the, on the internet is, a lot of these cities are, are in fact, looking at affordable housing, mixed income. And also, they're using it as, as one of the launching pads for redevelopment. It's, it's really tied in not just housing, but a redevelopment plan, a redevelopment strategy for, uh, parts of cities and municipalities that need and are struggling with redevelopment. I think if we do that, that, that's the way to go for me, for me, and I, and that's kind of what I'm hearing out there. People don't say it to us, but going back to what some of our weaknesses are and how we're struggling, they don't, they don't say it, but they, if they see it, then they recognize it. And they're kind of wishing that we do do something about it.
Missy, on, on your.
So, I'm on board with that.
On your slide there, you talked about taking the three-fifty that we don't have available in the general fund, but maybe the funding, are you talking about just that three-fifty with savings on the health plan? Or are you talking about all the savings on the health plan?
All savings on the general fund budget at the end of the year.
Right.
Not just healthcare savings, like, once we complete the year, fund balance, use of fund balance.
With a surplus.
Okay. And you come up with incentive. You come with incentive and you sunset it on day one, if it's a good incentive, you'll, you'll find some activity there.
So, can I just add to the discussion on SSRC, because if we're going to do something like this, because we are seventeen-point-nine percent of the total tax million, we will really need the county and school districts as a partner. So, we're going to have to have a discussion with them because housing, it depends, you know, when you talk affordable housing with them, they have said recently, that's a big priority there. But when we've just had discussions a year ago, when Ryan and I met with them to talk about something similar to this, that included parking with it, the, the feedback we received was that they weren't interested in doing this with housing. They were interested in using it more for commercials, so has that changed? I don't know. Rain Living would indicate at least it's changed for someone over there. But those are.
The county's position.
The county. So, those are, we're going to have to start those conversations to really bring them in.
Well, I don't think it's fair to use that as an example, because we all know that there's another incentive behind that.
What, what are you going to do with the savings on healthcare? For the eighteen, seventeen, eighteen budget?
There are no savings in the seventeen, eighteen budget. The changes we're making now don't go into effect until January twenty-nineteen.
Eighteen-nineteen.
Yeah, okay.
Eighteen-nineteen.
That would be this, that's what helped balance, remember, we hit, the budget was fifteen million dollar shortfall.
You're going to make that up by the savings in the.
Combinations of the healthcare, reductions to department's budgets, and revenue adjustments.
Okay.
So, so the savings in the healthcare have already been programmed into this budget.
The healthcare is because of reduction of liability and cost that you're.
Correct. It's both costs.
You don't need to say the way it's being stated is not correct.
No, we're just, okay.
We're not reducing healthcare.
Yeah, you're not reducing healthcare.
We're not reducing healthcare. Savings and the cost. Any other questions on the general fund? All right, so next we have our enterprise funds, starting with the water and sewer budget. Water and sewer budget is one-hundred-and-six, the revenues are one-hundred-and-sixty millions, one-sixty-seven. The actual total water and sewer budget is a hundred-and-sixty-one million, but those are the actual revenues, operating revenues. And it does include a rate adjustment of set nine-point-seven-six percent. In terms of our department budgets, seventy-one percent of the budget is for our utility operations. That includes our water and wastewater crews, that includes our plant operations, both wa, both water plants, both wastewater treatment plants. And as well as the activities spent on those services. Outside of our department budgets, the next largest item would be for debt service, which is twenty-two percent. So, the total, the, out of the total budget, fifty-eight percent is for our utility operations, our total department operations, and the next would be debt, debt service on the capital improvement, on the, uh, bonds for the water and sewer capital improvement program. Again, the budget is proposed at a hundred-and-sixty-one-point-nine million. It's an increase of nine million or six percent over the current year, does reflect a rate adjustment of nine-point-seven-six percent. It maintains the, if, the capital improvement program for water and sewer as a hundred-and-twenty million. That includes twenty-one-point-five million that would be funded from cash out of this budget. The remainder would be coming from bond proceeds. Of the capital improvement program, eighty million is programmed for wastewater improvements and forty million is programmed for water improvements.
What's left on the water improvements?
What's left?
Yeah, from the dissent decree.
You mean, the, oh, on the wastewater?
Yeah, because, no, what, water? You know, water was a hundred-and-fifty million and the balance of it was wastewater from the dissent decree.
Yes, sir, we're, um.
If I'm understanding your question, Greg, you're asking how much more investment we need to, to get out of our consent decree. So, um, the latest projection we've got, the seven-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar figure that was ballparked when we got into it, is about where consent decree driven, that's where we're projecting to end up. Now, we're do, making other investments as we need to above and beyond.
We have to.
Consent decree requirements are, so, um, I don't have the figure of how much is left, but, but that outlook over the ten-year projection is looking like it's going to be in the ballpark and relatively correct. We're about to embark on a fairly aggressive, even more aggressive, uh, program of capital improvements in our collection system. That's where our next big spin's going to be. We're, we're in construction with some big projects at the wastewater treatment plant, digester upgrades, train one aeration, MPDS permit compliance type. But a lot of our major assets, we have done the condition assessment and inventory. We're developing that list of priorities and we'll be rolling those projects out. And our early cost estimate for those and the spin moving forward is, over the next five years, eighty million a year on the wastewater side. And then reducing down, I think we showed that last time, reducing that number down a little bit. Does that answer your question, Councilman? Okay.
So, moving on to our stormwater program, the stormwater budget is, of course, the revenues from the stormwater system are, are funded, are funded from the stormwater fee. The expenditure for that is, uh, public works makes up thirty percent of the budget, engineering is twenty-two percent. We now have in this budget debt service and reserve since the new program to invest in, in the capital improvement program of ninety-three million over the next several years with.
Engineering is a hundred percent based on our stormwater plan, twenty-two percent?
Twenty-two percent of our, of the, of the department, in, the engineering department. Twenty-two percent of the budget funds is, is the engineering department. Staff is the program from the engineering budget. That includes the, go ahead.
I'm sorry, in our engineering department, that houses our stormwater compliance, our MS four compliance program, so that stormwater group, yeah, thank you, that, that stormwater group is housed.
So, the budget for stormwater is thirteen-point-four million, an increase of eight-thirty-six or six-point-six percent over the current year. The capital improvement program for this year is ten-point-three million, with a total projected CIP of ninety-three million over the next three to five years. As you are aware, the stormwater program manager was contracted for in March, and the bond ordinance was approved in April of fifty million. So, this program is helping to fund that program moving forward. The stormwater fee that was adopted last year will increase seventy-four cents per ERU, which is the equivalent residential unit. So, the rate will go from eleven-eighty per month to twelve dollars and fifty cents per month. That's for typical residential unit, and of course, commercial is on a, um, ER, is ERU based on their, um, impervious area. Next is our parking fund budget, um, the total parking fund budget. Majority of those revenues come in from street meters, actually garages and lot makes up thirty-nine percent, and then our street meters makes up thirty-four percent. And then non-moving violations are twenty-five percent of that budget. Expenditure-wise, it's split about thirty-seven percent for parking services and thirty-three percent is debt service. And then parking facilities is seven, seventeen percent of that budget. The total budget is proposed at eight-point-six million, which is an increase of six-hundred-eight, six-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand or nine percent over the current year budget. Revenues from parking, garage, and lots, of course, make up the majority. There will be included some scheduled paintings of the gar, some garages, as well as continued improvements in customer service and continuing to partner with our economic development areas to attract businesses to downtown. Next, we have our special revenues, starting with our hospitality tax budget. Hospitality tax is proposed at twelve-point-one million, which is an increase of approximately five-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand or four-point-eight percent over the current year. Revenues, projection, revenue collections are in line with current year projections, so we are feeling pretty confident about that four-point-eight percent increase proposed for next year. The budget that is given to you right now just reflects the current amounts by each of those different categories of the amount that's funded for, um, the hospitality tax committee, the amount to the line item agencies, and then the amount to, um, previously, previously-approved allocations from city council. We've not made any indications about how much you may want to move around within that budget for those areas, other than, of course, debt service and then the transfer to the general fund of three-point-seven million. And again, some of those allocations are already pre-approved, they were approved by council earlier, so at this point, it's just a matter of the budget allocations. I think they're still needing some direction from city council with regards to how we actually disperse those funds or how you actually want to disperse those funds.
The committee recommendations have been made, but I asked Erica to, you won't see them on your draft agenda for the fifth, I think, maybe we need to get that, this feedback and put them on for the nineteenth. The committee recommendations for H-Tax.
Are we having a follow-up discussion about H-Tax?
We are, but it won't be before you would be.
So, well, I mean, you know, I got questions.
Just don't have it this afternoon, I got a.
Yeah, some of these, and, and it's just simple autos, but I mean, I think that, you know, I think before we, we move forward, and I, I know there's a push to try to do, but, I mean, I think we really got to decide on how this money is spent. You know, what these groups, I mean, I, I've looked through and I've highlighted some reimbursables that are questionable and that we paid. Most of the nine-nineties aren't up to date and we're allowing them to get money. I just, I, I, we've got to change the system.
Well, DeeDee's been working really hard through the committee process, and as she's worked through that, I think she's found even more recommendations. So, I was trying to give her time to get through that, put all her recommendations together and have a work session discussion on it. So, timing-wise, you know, obviously, some of the bigger discussions do sit around these line item agencies.
Well, you know, they're all going to be lined up here January, July second, looking for a check.
Well, would your preference be to have the discussion on June nineteenth during the work session?
Suits me, I mean, I'm going to ask DeeDee to pull some more stuff, because I just think we, as we have this discussion, we got to decide what the guidelines are, because it seems to be a little loose. You know, and if we're going to make changes, I think Howard has some suggestions that he would like to implement, and, you know, I think we also got to decide, I mean, has this become the clean and safety fund? You know, or has it become, you know, we pushing to grow and.
Sure.
What are the accountabilities that we're holding people to, not just on the reimbursable, but deliveries? I mean, they're supposed to help increase the pot, and the reason the pot's increasing now is because we're having more restaurants open and.
So, my, I guess my question for you all then, just for the sake of direction, we can, we can pull together the presentation for the June nineteenth work session. And then you could, we're about to talk about your summer calendar, but you could either put them on for the evening meeting, committee recommendations, if you're trying to do that, that quickly. Or we could do the, I was going to push your work session on H-Tax more into the August timeframe and just let you make your recommendations as, you know, we're down.
How do we do that for funding? Because they all look for funding, I mean, once July.
Well, that's what I was saying, you, I wasn't necessarily going to assume you were going to factor in any changes for this round.
Well, I mean.
Of approvals.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to discuss.
If you're, if you're talking about discussing it before you approve these.
I, I, I'm not going to vote for the H-Tax the way, by just funding a group that we haven't really set out some guidelines on.
Then we wouldn't even be more aggressive.
You've been sitting with the committee folks?
No.
Where, what about the, um, um, the outline, the recommended structure that we discussed? The whitehead plan?
Mr. Rickman has different opinions of that, and I think we need, need to have a, a work session to let us debate where the council wants to go on it.
Well, between the two of you, I'd, I would, I'd like for us to do that a little sooner than later, because, you know.
I'm right here, anytime you want.
We're, we're approaching the point where dollars are going to be recommended or divvied out.
On both sides.
Yeah, and so, I, some of those, um, concerns I still have, and, um, I would be interested in seeing which, again, entities are. Honestly getting what they requested and those that are requesting and getting nothing.
I, I think the council needs to, there, there's a difference of opinion on the administration of the H-Tax, and we probably need to have a work session to work that out.
Right, and, and so my only question was, do you have that work session before you vote on the committee recommendations that are before, about to be before you? Or do you make your, just make your way through the committee recommendations that are about to be before you, so that they are not held up until August timeframe? And then have your work session in August?
I think everybody wants to have them before we.
Okay.
Grant.
So, if that's the case, then we're looking at probably the next council meeting realistically, because we're about to talk about your summer schedule where you're not meeting in July. So, if you don't want to.
State law says you got to meet.
Okay, well, I'm going to need a little guidance then on how you want to handle that. So, if you want to meet in, if you want to have your work session on H-Tax, then perhaps you can have that as your work session in July. And then vote on your committee recommendations.
I, I know that a lot of people don't want to meet in July, but if we can get four people together and have a meeting that maybe does a consent agenda and whatever routine things that we can do that night, just to meet the requirements of the law, I'm sure those four of us will be in town.
Okay, well, I've gotten lots of different feedback on that as far as your schedules go, so, well, that, that's next on your agenda, so I don't want to jump ahead. But I guess if you want us to move forward with your work session item, we can squeeze it into the June fifth work session. The June fifth work session's gotten pretty tight, but I can maybe move something off and put that on.
I'll be phoning them in.
Well, let's don't do it when you phone it in, you need to be sitting at the table for that debate.
I'm just, I'm, I'm out. I'm, I'm out, there's nothing I can do about it.
How about the nineteenth?
I'm here the nineteenth, I'm here the eleventh, I just out the fifth.
How about the nineteenth?
And that's fine, I thought, what I was hearing is that you wanted to vote on the recommendations too. So, is it realistic to think you would work through your discussion of guidelines and all that during a work session and then vote on the spreadsheet that evening? You're good with that?
I wouldn't think so.
I don't know why we couldn't, I mean, I think part of the, the questions I have may be, it creates them internal, you know, how do, how do we approve fourteen hundred dollars worth of gifts, gift cards on a reimbursable? To me, I don't understand how that happened. You know, how, how are we dishing out this money? And, and I think we need to have that conversation.
We could be real ambitious and, and, I mean, grind it out, um, if you want, next week. It'd be ni, it'd be nice to have H-Tax, um, not before us, you know, for the better part of July or August like it has been in the past, get it, get it done so everyone has some certainty. If we figure, if we can grind it out, I'm not sure how we do that if Daniel may not be in the room. And it also may just require some, you know, clear articulation of what, of what the rules might be, again. And then, of course, make sure we have some enforcement of those, of those rules.
Is, is there a possibility of having another meeting in June, like today's meeting, where we just have a work session in the afternoon when Daniel's going to be around?
Yeah, I will tell you, June and July are both very difficult for me.
And most people it is.
Yeah, and, um, that's anything's possible, requires clerking, three sentence.
I don't mind being on.
Juggling the phone, that doesn't bother me.
I think we can push through it if y'all have the, you know, wherewithal to go dedicate the time on the nineteenth.
We got to create a, a clear line of how this money's supposed to be spent and what we expect of it from people.
And that's not necessarily going to impact your, and it may or may not, your decision, decision, decision making on the committee recommendations.
May not at all, absolutely, but it may.
It may, I don't know, but your guidelines that you talk about, say you do it on the nineteenth and we have the committee recommendations on the agenda that evening.
But I think it's important that we don't give any even committee money out if their paperwork's not up to date. You can't be two years behind on nine nineties.
Not when you're getting.
On June nineteenth?
June nineteenth, afternoon of the committee.
That's our regular meeting.
Come in two hours early, let's just come in now.
Pack some snacks, let's do it.
I think you definitely can do it, I guess what I was trying to make sure, I wasn't understanding you to say that based off whatever guidelines you come up with in the work session, we would need to have then gone through the committee backup material to see if those decisions, you know, the recommendations are impacted by, if you're saying, you know, gift cards can't be expensed and someone has done that. I mean, we're not going to literally have the time to have gone back and given you any guidance on the
I mean, we.
Committee's recommendations.
Yeah, I, I think it could be clear because, I mean, I think it, then it becomes part of our role in the reimbursable. We shouldn't be paying for workers' drinks. That's the same thing the penny tax, sales tax people were trying to scam. That's, that's not, you know, we're not buying Mountain Dew and water for your workers or toilet paper.
That would be the going forward on the reimbursables, again, if you all see the recommendations and you do what you normally do and decide that you're going to fund things or not, that's the
I think we could do it.
Going forward on how we.
The funding is only, the funding is only based on what they actually, the amount they, the, what they are allocated is different than what they may get reimbursed based on what's submitted, that's eligible.
We have to agree one way or another because Howard's.
Parameters are, yes.
Recommendation is different from that.
So, so, yes, we need to agree on what the parameters are, even before so is going forward. Um, and obviously, we all always maintain the prerogative of looking, of looking back and determining, you know, how we treat applicants accordingly, based on, on prior decisions made, we can do that, but, yes.
We can climb the hill.
Okay, no problem.
Then lengthy discussion on the nineteenth.
Okay, so, final, final budget we have for you is the accommodations tax and it's proposed at two point five, almost two point six million. It's approximately three hundred and sixty-nine thousand or sixteen percent increase over the current year. The accommodations tax, of course, the majority of the hospi, the accommodations tax, ninety-five percent of it is allocated or thirty percent is allocated for advertising and promotion of tourism, sixty-five percent is allocated for tourism-related expenditures. We've not, of course, made recommendations specifically how those funds would be expended to the two groups that typically receive those funds. Um, as far as the five percent general fund purposes, our general purpose funds, um, which you, you have used previously to fund One Columbia, a portion of One Columbia, as well as the Together We Can Read program. And, of course, twenty-five thousand dollars is an automatic transfer to the general fund and that's based on, that's the first allocation straight out of the state law. Any questions about accommodations tax? The last item is just mentioning the budget as discussed. Next week is the budget public hearing, first reading, and of course, our, our open house where we will have departments presenting, um, information about their services and programs that they provide. That would be June the fifth. Public hearing is scheduled for six P M., the six P M. meeting, rather. Second reading, June nineteenth, in which you've just now added additional items for discussion. June nineteenth would be the second and final reading. Thank you all for your patience and diligence and commitment to this process.
Digging deeper into the presentation a little bit between now and then, but thank you. Thank y'all, good job.
Welcome, thank you.
Has Pam got, Pam, you got your list of things to review?
Hey, I want a raise.
Want to go over your list with us as far as your state?
Daniel might have more, but the, the couple of things I had was, um, looking at the possibility of removing spouse coverage in the, um, current workforce if they have creditable coverage.
And the retirees.
If they had a family.
Okay.
And I think the captain, the chief, retired chief had a good question about spouse coverage if a spouse has creditable coverage and then for some reason loses credit, creditable coverage.
Can we bring them back?
Can we bring them back?
Right.
Now, we, last year, we changed, was it la, yeah, last year, we changed it, the start of this, um, yes, so, starting in twenty seventeen, we, we made a change that you all voted on that would, once they go off, once they leave here, they have to keep the plan that they have and they can go lower, but they can't go higher. And they have to, the people that are on their coverage when they leave, then that's, those are the people that they can keep, they can't add. And we were, the reason why we were doing that is because a lot of people were getting married and they were adding people after they were retired, um, some of them adding people because they were sick and they were, seriously. So, we were like, you can't just add people kind of willy-nilly. So, if they had a spouse when they left and they got a new spouse, they, I guess you could switch, switch your spouses. But that's the reason why we made that change. I mean, if y'all want to make, change it again.
They can, they can.
I mean, I think the question, the question comes down to is, if, if the spouse leaves and let's say in five years, she's worked somewhere, she's had insurance with them, they don't, she doesn't have any more, she gets laid off, let's say she works at a big utility that goes out of business.
Well, I mean, you know, let's say everything, I mean, really, honestly, because it gets down to eligibility rules and everybody's, there's always a circumstance, I deal with it every single day of my life. Somebody's got some circumstance that we have to be careful that we do something consistently.
What would be our general rule on that? Mine is looking at.
That you can't come back on your plan.
Again, when, when you all made the change in twenty seventeen, it was that whatever coverage level they left with, they could go lower, but they couldn't go higher and that they could not add any additional dependents after they left. So, hypothetically, any, anything can happen. I mean, I'd love to create a rule for everybody, but, you know, it gets to where we have to kind of manage this whole thing.
Well, the big one for me would be to see what impact removing spouse coverage from the existing employees would have.
You know, it's just so interesting, um, of course, there's several sidebars that happen here and, um, that's usually, it usually precipitates a pretty decent back and forth between, Mr. Duvallum is defined, we start talking about spouses and family coverage. You know, we, I, I appreciate it, first of all, appreciate the work the staff's done with our consultants and appreciate the discussions that councils have amongst ourselves around health insurance. I really appreciate the input of our employees and retirees that I found it edifying and, and passionate, but still helpful and, you know, and I felt even better that all the situations that were brought up to us, we contemplated in our, in our own discussions as, as well. Having a well-rounded discussion, but, uh, we, we do need to spend a lot of time looking at, uh, the consistently evolving nature of healthcare coverage, constantly shifting sands, uh, of, of exactly how you provide long-term benefits to, to your employees. And again, continue to refocus our efforts on our employees, on our employees and our retirees. Let's look at the, the entire package, but obviously, our long-term responsibility rests with the people, the men and women who work for us every single day. And I, I don't, it's not on to us to, to, to ask a spouse, if you have optional coverage somewhere else to out, to use that coverage as opposed to our.
Well, it's not, it's not even, it's not even the, just the coverage, it's that we have been supplementing a spouse to almost a level of what we supplement an employee. And that's part of what's not sustainable. And had, had, you know, the gentleman who spoke earlier, his wife has been able to do that for forty years. If we had all of that funding back in, we may not be having this discussion. Something to think about, but our obligation is to them, you're right, not to, to.
And, and I think this, the process that we've gone through, um, has shown that that's our focus. Thank y'all.
What are, anything, any other items that, um, you all recall from the discussion that we need to research?
You put it all up there.
I need to make sure that my list is right.
The other, the other items that I noted, um, you know, just some clarifications about pre-existing conditions and disabilities.
The retirement, getting some real clarity.
If the, if the account can carry over the funds, if that's the decision we have to make or not.
Let's look at the numbers and, I mean, and may, and maybe, they, yes, they can carry over maybe, maybe for a period of time, maybe year to year, maybe two years, whatever happens to be, um, I mean, I think there ought to be some, some ability that, that, to hedge that liability if I'm not sick this year, but I'm sick next year, uh, but, but not, not in perpetuity.
Was the consensus regarding post-sixty-five coverage, um, to move forward with the HRA account for that group?
And to keep the DDB for the post-sixty-five?
Mr. Rickman said combine the two, the HRs, uh, HRAs into one HRA.
He said post, he said post-sixty-five.
Post-sixty-five, do we keep the post-sixty-five and maintain them as a DDB?
No, we look at HRA account.
So, HRA, but it's a DDB.
It's still a DDB with the HRA.
At three hundred dollars is what they currently are, what their DDB is forced to be. But the question is, is it every retiring in the system or is it those folks that are in it as of December thirty-first? And then that's where the line is drawn.
Oh, you have to draw the line, I mean, we can't, we can't provide benefits for the future at this point. New, new hires would not have that opportunity.
Pre-sixty-five, pre-sixty-five, hit my pre-sixty-five.
They may turn post-sixty-five.
I'm sixty-four today and I turn sixty-five this year, I'm a retiring, well, I have sixty-five next year.
Or I might be sixty-five today, I still get post-sixty-five, ten years. Do we want to fund that, take that to the HRA or the DDB?
Population as it is that was presented.
I mean, that's what we're asking.
But those are the questions we have to answer when council's here, I mean, not everybody's here, that's a discussion point.
So, the population we've talked about now includes everybody hired before two thousand and nine. That population, what was presented did not include a pre-sixty, a post-sixty-five coverage. So, now, we're saying post-sixty-five would continue for existing retirees in the plan. Obviously, new enrollment drops December thirty-first.
Right.
If you're not enrolled by December thirty-first.
Currently in the plan.
You weren't hired before two thousand and nine.
Yep.
No, no, no HRA.
Correct, that's my understanding.
What about the, um, age requirement?
I'm sorry, I was asking your questions, what was that?
The age requirement, the fifty-five? Is that something you guys want to?
That, that just reflects, but, I mean, kind of mar, mar, kind of marriage, is it up to state law, rule ninety, right? I mean, is that where?
No, that's just our own, it doesn't have anything to do with that.
It's not as aggressive as.
Fifty-five, fifty-five.
Ninety's a lot more aggressive.
Fifty, fifty-five, thirty-five, is that right?
Yes.
That's the rule in ninety.
Right, fifty-five, thirty-five would be the rule of ninety.
We have a, I mean, we have several folks who can retire fairly young, so, that was just a thought as to adding that, but I do see the, you know, there's going to be some angst with that one, adding the age. For folks that, we've at, we were basically saying, we're going to honor the, if you were here prior to two thousand and nine, but then we're adding another caveat on top of it. I mean, back then, when, when we said that you would get retiree insurance through the city prior to two thousand and nine, there was no age requirement attached to it, it's just if you made it twenty years, then you would get it, and so, when we.
As long as it was available. I mean, I mean.
You were retirement eligible as well, I mean, you had to be retirement eligible.
You had to be retirement eligible.
Yes.
That's why, that's what's said several times. Several times they, it didn't make any sense to me that we would make lifetime obligations to someone at thirty-nine years old.
No, they would have to be retirement eligible. Right, they have to be retirement eligible.
But there are some people.
But there are some people.
Certainly, certainly, absolutely.
Yeah, there are some people who are really young when they're retirement eligible.
Would be, would be retirement eligible.
But, you know, that, that goes back to the question is, is, if, if they can get credible insurance from their other thing, because, I mean, in today's world, it's, nobody's going to retire at forty-seven and never not work another day. Ain't gonna happen.
That's what she said.
There's no way. You'll be working till I'm eighty-eight.
That was her example, anyway, and so, there may be other examples like that.
And I won't have any else here.
That, I guess what I'm conveying to you is, at July one of two thousand and nine, prior to that, the rule was, if you're retirement eligible and you serve the city for twenty years, you would get the insurance ever and upon retirement.
You'd have the opportunity. You'd have the opportunity to get insurance. You don't get it if you don't have it.
Well, yes. That's with all of us. That goes without saying with everything we're talking about. But I think we're adding on the age requirement. The age requirement back then wasn't, there was no age requirement. I was just trying to explain to y'all why they were.
How large is that population? How large is that population?
Largest what, population?
That we guessed, we guessed that would fall into that, into that number of those who were here pre-two thousand, twenty-nine would not be retirement eligible by state standards, but would also still potentially exceed the twenty-year threshold.
Yeah, I don't know. See, I mean, we can look at what cover it, we can look at the time.
Bucket of a bucket.
Right, and we can look at the time people have with us, but we, we may not be able to capture all of their other eligibility. Because they could have worked for a state agency, they could have worked anywhere else. People meet eligibility at different points. There's so many different points. Everybody's situation is different.
Part of the purpose of doing this with the July first, two thousand nine, because it was a natural marking indication already on our books.
You made a change before.
Right, the other mark is of course the two thousand and fourteen state requirement, which I'm not sure if a lot of current employees of how much they register with that whole rule of ninety.
Nobody registers until they get ready to retire.
So it's a matter of, so it was, in other words, it's a matter of what, where do you want to draw the line of demarcation if we're going to draw the line?
And, and keep in mind, no matter where we draw that line, there will be five stories that walk up there and tell you all like they did today. That's just going to happen no matter what. If we change the fifty-five and it goes away, there's still someone that came in on July second, two thousand nine that's going to say.
Exactly. If I hadn't been here the day before, I wouldn't have.
We just need to know there is a group of somebody that's going to be right at that edge that's going to come up and say, oh.
Always, always.
We'll never be able to cure.
But I guess what the council is asking though, is it enough of a, I mean, is it, is the savings going to be that much of a difference? I mean, because it wasn't a requirement, it wasn't before two thousand nine. So if we add that on, what are we accomplishing by doing that?
Is it something we set for the future?
That is what, that was part of the calculation on what the liability was going to be. I can't tell you what that amount is.
For future.
For our future liability, yes. By changing it to fifty-five, because he also had us change it, he bumped up one of the options, which because we did the fifty-five, was just bumping everyone up two years as well. So if there's a dollar amount to it, I don't know what that amount is.
Yeah, but he did that before we went back and changed and added the two thousand nine. And you know, I mean, the age thing wasn't, we came up with this.
Age thing was before the two thousand nine.
Right.
Because we had already, he, uh, Eric had already, one of the, one of the um, options, three B, well, two, two, three and three B added the age requirement. And it added an additional two years of eligibility requirement. Which we didn't add that. So if you had to have twenty-five years, you'd have to have twenty-seven. If you had to have twenty-eight, you'd have to have thirty. So we didn't, we didn't add that plus the age.
And I think part was also our, there's two different pieces to this decision. One is the maintaining of the DDB. That was really the first decision that needed to be made, if, if council was willing to maintain that DDB. Because then after that, then it's a matter of, okay, then what do we do with that DDB? So the option that we've, the path we've gone on is maintaining DDB through an HRA. If they were to maintain the path of staying on the city's insurance and covered under our plan, then their premiums, as you recall from September, really got lopsided. Of course, that will, you know, fluctuates with the DDB, you know, with flat. Um, so that's really sort of what we're looking at. So what, what, what we're trying to figure out now in terms of how we can calculate it all is just working within what we have as the DDB, because then that's going to absorb, we're no longer paying the claim, so what we're assuming is this dollar amount is this dollar amount. What will fluctuate is the number of people in that plan. So in a, in any given year, I mean, there were some projections in Eric's numbers early on, further out, that there may be another year, there's a spike in retire, the number of retirees in the plan. But right now, what's giving us the savings is that we're assuming a certain number of folks in the DDB, in the HRA, getting the DDB at that dollar amount we projected today, or starting here.
Yeah, I guess all I'm saying is, if, does it make that much of a difference, being that he had factored that in? And then we went back and tweaked and said, put in the whole pre-two thousand nine thing. I don't know that that.
We haven't gotten back any numbers from him on the, on the, on the two thousand and nine. And it might not, but you know, um, the age and the, the age and the years of service make a difference for how long a person stays on the plan. So if they are forty, they're going to stay on it longer than they will if they're fifty-five. So that was the whole point of that.
I would say, and Eric said, and y'all have tweaked fifty-five and two thousand nine, just like it's stated in the, in the presentation on the DBDs. Daniel, uh, you want to review the spouse DBD?
I think we need to get all of it on the table. We need to know, we need to know where the numbers are.
Well, in that case, it might be a matter of the DDB, if the D, if you look at the combined amount of the DDB, that number isn't changing. You add the retirees amount, but the spouse's amount, then it's, it's still the same.
Yeah.
But if you.
One person will get more and one person will get less if, if you keep the same amount.
But my, my question is, my, my overall question goes to, why are we supplementing a spouse? They didn't work for the city. And in this scenario, what you showed in numbers is, is that we're supplementing close to seventy-five percent of their thing. And to me, our obligation is to the person who worked here. If they want to have coverage, there's a cost to that coverage. And that's what it is. So we had this discussion in two thousand and eight and everybody was like, no, no, no. But the reality is, had we just done that formula, then we wouldn't be having this healthcare discussion. Well, it's one of the gentlemen I talked to before, I mean, him and his wife been on the city plan for sixty years.
A lot longer than he worked.
And we've been supplementing that, and that's what I don't think's fair, because it actually really hurts the employees. Because the employees now and into the future, the ones, you know, I mean, eight hundred dollars a month, that's ten grand a year.
So we have that to look, look at calculating, adjusting the DDB.
So anyway, I mean, I think collectively, we all want the same thing. We want to get to making sure that we can take care of the employees.
Um, I was just going to say, I think what Daniel's saying is really the same as the surcharge. I think the question is, what's the fair amount of the surcharge? I think there's a difference between saying you're not going to allow spouse, spouses to be covered at all, or saying, okay, yes, we need coverage, but there's a, a, there's a cost. And then the employee itself can figure out whether or not that cost is, makes more sense with the city or, you know, or, or something else. I think that's the difference. A hundred dollars a month sounds a little low. And I think there probably be a lot of people who would be willing to pay more than that. The question is, what is the right amount?
Well, I mean, what I was saying really was is that your, your spouse can get insurance, but whatever the cost is, it is the cost. We're supplementing that right now, and we shouldn't be.
Employers portion and the employees portion. And some, some employers do that. They charge the whole, you know, it, it costs a thousand dollars a month.
That's what it is.
That's what they pay. Yeah, regardless of they have options.
What direction do you all need in order to run numbers before next week? Do you, are we running numbers on the employee, I mean, the spousal coverage, whatever it is? Are we taking, are we saying no spousal coverage, or are we doing the surcharge?
Well, you can't, you can't.
You can't do that.
Well, you have, no supplement is what we're looking at.
That's what I'm asking. I mean, you could just, we could not do any spousal coverage. I mean, not offer it. I mean, that's an option too, isn't it?
Well, if they didn't have credible coverage.
You'd have to.
We'd have to offer it to them at the full price. We don't have, we don't have to subsidize it, but we could offer it to them at the full price, or.
Well, there's some places though, that you don't, you don't have to offer spousal coverage.
I think we ought to just.
Or employ, or, or, or pay for it.
I think we just got to look at all the numbers, because at the end of the day, the reason we're here is to try to figure out a plan that gets us, a sustainable plan for the employees from now on.
Since we've advertised the budget at what it is, any numbers we would be talking about are going to be really.
Wouldn't matter, because the budget would go down, not up.
Well, the budget we're talking about, the, the information we need for the budget to pass by next week, I mean, can't really get that.
As long as the top line number doesn't change, it doesn't matter.
Well, and then if, if it does, and there's options around that as well. I think the biggest thing, uh, is what we're saying, if we're established that we're maintaining a DDB, that, that in itself is a decision. Then the next decision is, and we're going to use that DDB to fund an HRA, who then is in, who then becomes eligible? That's really worth the call. That's, that's the decision.
Those are the two questions. The, a lot of the other stuff is.
Eligible would be pre-sixty-five and post-sixty-five retirees. And then, then you get into the spouse coverage.
And that's all retired, okay, add to that population, actives hired prior to July first, two thousand nine, all actives through December thirty-first?
Well, not actives at all, these are retirees.
I know, but we're talking about, we're talking, well, part of the question is.
Who's eligible?
He's eligible for one, four.
If you're pre-sixty-five today, you get post-sixty-five when you turn sixty-five.
Yeah, that's the other question.
That's the other question.
Anybody that's retired as of January the first of nineteen is eligible out.
For pre and post?
Say they go, Howard? Anybody that's retired as of January the first is eligible for pre and post-HRA.
January first, nineteen?
Yes. Going twice?
Retire or retirement? It's really December thirty-first.
So pre and post, December, by December thirty-first, twenty eighteen.
Is that retired, retirement eligible? What was that? That one's, they've been talking about retired.
Well, we didn't talk about both, retired and retired eligible.
We have folks retirement eligible this year, they would be retirement eligible by the end of December thirty-first, but they're not retiring.
Right. They may choose to still work.
They're the folks that have hires that's July, July fourth, two thousand nine.
Yeah.
Well, that can't be, because.
Well, she has eight years.
Right, she was two thousand and eight.
Yeah, she still has eight years before she's even eligible.
She has eight years, another, another eight years, top of that reaches fifty-five, fifty-five.
Mr. Bond? Mr. Bond? Okay.
Yeah, her, her issue was age fifty-five. She wasn't, she was.
That, that lady here?
Yeah, because she, she's, how old was she for?
Yeah.
She said she's forty. Steve asked.
She volunteered.
Can you hear me? We can. Okay.
Okay, wait, so let me just clear this up then. So it's pre and post, if they're eligible December thirty-first. But what about anyone hired before two thousand nine, when they get to that point, are they going to be both pre and post sixty-five?
Uh, 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 how are we going to make that decision if we don't know what the numbers are and what that affects in long-term thing?
That's the number that we have, that.
I mean, no offense, but I mean, you're asking me to, to, to say yes or no.
We can figure that out too, but y'all would be awful certain on the other one.
Well, I thought we had, well, my, my idea was, I thought we were going to get numbers. And that was my understanding of why we wrote down all these lists and stuff today. So maybe I misunderstood.
So.
We probably, why don't we, uh. Uh. Well, why, why, why don't we kind of think about this, study this a little more until we get back together?
That's what I'm saying, the budget will be.
We're running out of days.
Well.
Because the revenues are the revenue.
Well, I just, I, I'm going to make a decision. I want to be able to say I'm making this decision because of this. If I just making a decision on a motion, it'd be.
I agree, but we'll keep changing, so I don't know that Aon is going, we may not have all the numbers back from Aon.
They ought to be able to ballpark it. They've, they've had enough information from us. They've come up with a lot of recommendations. Hey, we sat in this room and we were able to do it with Tower Watsons that they're moving that needle around. They know what our basis is, so if you make the changes, what does that look like?
And they've given us a lot of information, we're able to give, like, that's how we made some projections that we've done for this point. It's just a matter of, they've, most of their numbers have been based on a certain, uh, demarcation in terms of which population. So if we're moving that needle to the population.
See, I thought the, I thought the needle was always set at two thousand and nine. That's what I've been basing off of everything that we had here. Because if you looked at our population based on that, you've got, really, there's only about seven hundred people who fit that category. Everybody else is all way under. And then, then the reality of them being.
We know how much like today.
Twenty-five years is thirty years or whatever it is now.
With today's retiring population, and actually in the, the numbers that we're seeing before we, we know how much it will cost to pay the DDB for retirees January one. It's roughly eight point two million.
For current retirees.
Current retirees and, um.
But are, are we using current numbers? Are we at the eighty-twenty?
Okay.
They're no longer.
We do. I mean, I just think.
We adjust that DDB or liability.
So, I, I also want to make something clear, because as you said, we're going to spend based upon current actuals, eight point four. That number, if you look at the numbers that are out there based upon retirees, that population is projected to grow a little bit over the next couple of years. So with future budgets, it's not going to be eight point four, potentially, or the estimate will be about ten point one. So we're still going to see some increase in our cost.
But you're assuming, but you're assuming there's nobody going to timeout.
Well, you know, if you act, the actuarial, they'll tell you they have factored that in.
Built in, right.
But, you know, we seem realistically that it doesn't always follow that.
Right, so this, this is the breakout they gave us in the present, the last presentation. But again, you know, so that's, but that's assuming the full population. Y'all have already capped off some of the population by drawing the line at the two thousand and nine mark. But this is, this is, this is not.
See, I thought that's what we were using as our basis for all of it, two thousand and nine.
That was, that was a true.
You were in before two thousand and nine.
That was a new.
That was a new.
Yeah.
What they were basing it on was, anybody retired as of December thirty-first of this year, who actually retired from the city, whether active and retired or retiree, already retired.
Am I just making this up? Didn't we have this conversation about that, that population? It was, I mean, what I have in my notes was it was around seven hundred people that would stay in the system.
We'd add back to the, we add, which would make it option one D instead of one C.
One D point seven six.
Right.
Or just twenty.
Yeah. Yeah.
What's changing now is discussions about how does the spouse's DDB factor in? Do we shift that spouse's DDB to the retirees' DDB? If we stay within that total dollar amount.
Or do we reduce the?
About to lose a quorum, y'all, so, um, any other questions you have for staff, let's, um, sounds good.
There was an executive session item, I think that.
Need to add rain to it.
If we're losing a quorum though, I guess I'm, you need to stay have it. Yes, well, I don't think it counts towards.
We're not voting anyway, are we?
Can't do executive session as well. She can't even attend the executive session.
That's true.
And then the summer schedule, I do need some feedback on that.
Well, maybe good to go, other than the statutory issue Mr. Duval just raised. Figure that out, y'all.
I'll leave the room and y'all decide what you wanted to.
I like, I like the summer schedule.
I won't be sent to jail.
Not for this anyway.
I like the summer schedule.
Who's gonna tell?
Let's, 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 let's hope to approve the summer schedule with, revisit the issue Duval raised. Move, in a second?
We don't need to bother with that.
All right, okay, we don't bother with that. We like it.
Okay.
Um, the, um, we'll see. Okay, move with Jerry?
No executive session. Oh, he can't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Say hi, Howard. With Jerry? Move with a second? Tell Mr. Vaughn to get her eye. We're done.
Thank you all.